I know. Moonwalk looks like he has a headache. Look at him. I'm not saying anything, I'm just saying. Okay. I don't need masks to do it. I can do that. I got the doctor. I know how to be a mayor. I said I know how to be a mayor. Party takes care of it.
The house that's been abandoned for four years, so squatters are living in there. And so did you get an update on what we're doing with it? So they removed the board that used to look towards my house. That's why I knew somebody was in the house. So it's been empty for four years and now squatters are out here. And the police, uh, they, he was gone before they got there, but the door was open. So that's a great, great house.
You'll need to unlock your iPhone. Just my way and I'm doing it 5:30.
What was it? Was that the?
Seeds or not seeds, I'm doing it. We've got bad weather coming. We're not going to mess around.
Hey Terry. See ya. Saved your life. You owe me one.
The time being 5:30, the Chair will call the May 21st, 2024 meeting of the City Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Lesko, will you please call the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Noatriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Buscher.
Present.
Mayor Buscher, a quorum is present.
Thank you Clerk Lesko. The civility pledge, in the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. We're going to go into presentations first at tonight's meeting. So I would like to please call up Chief Ken Scarlett and I would like to call up Director David Fooks, please.
Square off right here.
Yeah.
My money's on the, my money's on the people, am I right? So this evening, we're presenting to you in a unified front, our neighborhood police officers, which represent every beat plus downtown. And then we also are presenting to you our zone managers. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Chief Scarlett to do the NPO presentation. And then Director Fooks, I'll let you go into the Zone Manager presentation.
Thanks Mayor, appreciate that. Well, it is exciting times for the city of Springfield and specifically all schools of Springfield. Police department who work extremely hard to get our staffing up to the levels where we can fit in and fill some necessary positions. And over the course of the last few months, we finally filled our remaining major police officer positions. We've got 10 neighborhood police officers here this evening that I'm extremely grateful to have and proud to have them as part of this team. And this is a great partnership that our agency has with Public Works and it's one of the mayor's initiatives. The Zone Managers, seeing these two teams work together, it's going to be very powerful. Looking forward to full staff of NPOs and looking forward to this collaboration that we have across divisions, across agencies, I should say. I'm going to make some introductions real quick. I'll start right here. This is Jason Leach. Jason is the NPO beat 800. I'm going to try and give you all, pass out a brochure that we have there. This will be available to the public as well. It kind of has, it's got pretty pictures on there with the area that they generally serve. And on the back, it also has awards and patients beat 800, which is the northwest portion of the city. Officer Lauren Pettit beat 700, central and west. Officer Josh Davis is beat 600. He's southwest part of Springfield. Officer Joe Vos is beat 500, south part of Springfield. Officer Mark Bridges is also beat 500. He's a lake area. This is an NPO spot that we've not seen in several years. We brought back, so he's going to be responsible for issues in and around and on the lake. We've got also Tim Collier. Tim is the NPO beat 400, southeast part of Springfield. Officer Lamar Moore, beat 300, the east side of Springfield. Also Jamari Davis. We've got a lot of Davises in this. Also Jamari Davis, he's our traditional downtown beat 200 NPO. Officer Dale Davis, again, this is another spot that we brought back. Dale is our downtown walking NPO and/or riding bicycles.
Thank you.
Right?
But not the motorized kind, the pedaling kind.
Yes.
Officer Monica Dorsey, she's beat 100, neighborhood police officer northeast part.
Yes, sir.
All of them are quite well. And finally Sergeant Romans and Sergeant Romans has the task of coordinating all the efforts that these men are going to do. And they work flex schedules to make sure that they attend as many meetings as possible. And I don't have to sit here and talk about all the great things to do, you know, from coast advantage and coffee with the top to boxing programs, to cops and bombers. I mean, it's about our involvement in the community. It's about earning the trust with the citizens that we serve. And these men and women tackle long-term problems and I know each one of you have called me on occasion or two to pass along a problem. And what I like to do is pass it to the folks that get our solutions. And this, this is the team that when you send me something, these are the men and women who go out and make it happen. Very proud of our NPO unit.
Can you also Chief, tell everyone what Officer Dorsey has an accreditation of? The, for the elderly?
Oh, senior services.
Yeah. She's a senior services officer. So we have one senior services officer, officer as an NPO as well. So thank you Officer Dorsey for getting that.
He can work with Chuck then, right?
And I just hope this night's going to start. We do. And I just want to say to all the NPOs, thank you for joining up to be an NPO, to make the vision come true, to make a difference in public safety in the city of Springfield. So thank you all. Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, Fooks, you're up.
Well, good evening everyone. I am honored to be here with sworn officers and with the Zone Managers. I think we are going to be able to produce a lot of good things for the people of Springfield by working together, beginning with issues of private crime and disorder. This is a great team. I want to thank the mayor for making it possible, and the gentlemen on the board. We're looking forward to working with each and every one of you here on the City Council as well as with our colleagues in Springfield. So it's my pleasure to introduce our NPOs first.
Nope, your Zone Managers. They're not sworn. We don't give them guns.
I just thought they were going to get to carry a gun in the badge. Introducing first Mike Horn, who is going to be in wards one and six.
So Mr. Redpath and Alderwoman Noatriano, there's your Zone Manager.
All right. The next is Michelle Dos, who is in wards two and three.
Yep. And I think that Roy, you've been calling Michelle, haven't you?
He told.
Next we have Ryan Buckley, who's going to be working in wards seven and 10.
Alderman Carlson and Alderman Hanauer.
Already dealt with them.
I talked to him, I talked to him three times a day.
Next we have Brad Zeiger in wards four and five.
Brady, you got a minute?
He's doing an awesome job.
And last, but certainly not least, a senior member of our team. And I have the great pleasure of working with Mr. Gant from day one at Public Works. He was with the Housing Division and he knows the city. Mike Gant in wards eight.
Yep, there we go. He's been great so far. Thank you. Yeah. So, thank.
I would also like to take this opportunity to introduce everyone to our Arborists. Brad Hamlin is here. He's been out working on trees. In fact, we've had to call out a forestry unit. We've had some large trees and a couple of trees come down in the last hours.
Yeah, wind.
Yeah.
Wind's bad and we've got forecast for some tough weather.
Right. Yes. And thank you all for joining as well to make our city a more beautiful place to live. I will entertain any Aldermen if they have something, or Alderwomen, that they have something they would like to say real quick, if anyone has anything?
Mayor, if I may.
Absolutely. Alderman Gregory.
Well, I just want to say thank you to all the NPOs. I'm going to meet with my four soon and I appreciate y'all reaching out to me early. I know this gentleman covered for Mr. Vos. He did a good job, you know? And you guys got a big award, you know, NPO beat, you know, going out there to the lake. So I appreciate y'all. I've known my man since I was a little kid. So it's, it's, it's good seeing all of y'all up here. Mr. Davis, welcome to the team. I about know everybody up here. So appreciate y'all for all you're doing. I know we've got a tough job ahead of us. But our Zone Managers, I've made contact with, I know Michelle and Mr. Gant always have been working. And my friend, Mr. Horn, he's been all over. He, he, he's a go-getter. And you know, our, our new Arborist, he's, he's a smart guy. He gave me some ideas on how to handle some things. And I pass them along, good business ideas to our, our community. So I look forward to working with y'all. Y'all, Mr. Fooks, do your thing. But there's one guy that I've been bugging to death, Mr. Flynn. Mitchell Flynn. Mitch Flynn. I know he's not his own manager or nothing, but I want to compliment him too. Because obviously I've been contacting the wrong person, but he has been doing a fabulous job, passing along that information. And I know I sent him a lot of stuff, but I, I thought that was important too. So thank you.
Housing Division Manager.
Well, I'll get it right sometime. But I appreciate him for sending everything as, as need be. So thank you.
Thank you Alderman. Alderman Carlson.
Yeah, I just want to quickly publicly commend, I've been working with Ryan Buckley now for a month or so. And honestly, between these two groups, probably 90% of my calls, but I've also been working with Officer Josh Davis and Beat 600. We've been to a couple of neighborhood meetings together and, and you are always very responsive as well when I've text you on a particular issue. So I just want to acknowledge the two people I work with, probably on a daily basis. So thank you.
Absolutely. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you Mayor. I, I just want to say first of all, it's so exciting to see all these NPOs. It's been a long, a long wait and really, really thrilled to have you guys all in place. And Zone Managers, now Dave doesn't, Dave has a reason to duck my calls. It's fabulous. Mike, you've been fabulous. Thank you so much. And, and of course, you know, any Ward Eight residents who are currently in other positions. But we have great people working for us and you've really, housing and, and these issues of cleanliness and safety, it's huge. Thank you all so much. You are going to be very popular.
Yes.
Or unpopular, maybe, I don't know.
Alderwoman Noatriano.
Thank you Mayor. Congratulations to everyone. I just wanted to give a shout out to my NPOs. They have been available pretty much around the clock and are very responsive. And yeah, making my life way easier. So thank you for that. And also shout out to Mike Horn, who has been working with me, educating me on Public Works and all the ins and outs, and taking me on a, a drive around to see some of the problems. But, but it's, you're a group well-suited to tackle those. So congrats. Thanks.
Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you Mayor. You know, I wasn't going to say anything, but I'd be remiss if I didn't. You all have a very difficult job and thank you for your willingness to help. This is where it starts. You're going to make a difference in the city and there's no getting around it. Now Director Fooks, I got to say that, Mr. Gant, I apologize. The emails and calls are now going to be shifted from him to you. I try to be reasonable, but it's good to work with you again and always good to see you and wish you all the best. Thank you.
These folks standing in front of us show us the city is in great hands. So thank you all for your time tonight too.
Thank you guys.
Okay, before we get into the zoning portion of the meeting, I just want to tell everyone that Chief Canny and Director Fooks have been directed to come tell me if we get inclement weather and we have to go to the basement. So we will let you know if that takes place, okay? All right. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2024-007 for the property located at 2833 and 2901 East Cook. The petitioner is Dependable Motors Incorporated. The present zoning classification is I-1 Light Industrial District, Section 155.040. The requested zoning relief is a variance of Sections 155.112, surfacing to allow construction of an open off-street parking and vehicle storage area of dustless millings and rock without requiring a wearing surface of asphaltic concrete or comparable hard surface, 155.136, regulations for surfacing of off-street loading facilities to allow to construct open off-street loading spaces of dustless millings and rock without requiring a durable hard surface pavement, 155.143, plan of off-street parking or loading areas to proceed with constructing an open off-street parking and vehicle storage area of dustless rock and millings without requiring plans for accessory off-street parking areas or a building permit, 155.480, landscape screening and lighting regulations to allow construction of a parking area without requiring a landscape plan, including but not limited to installation and maintenance of parking lot landscaping, screening and lighting, and the points related thereto. Background is the requested variances were granted for this location on December 20th of 2018 for a period of five years in docket number 2018-071. The five-year period has expired as of December of 2023. The Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is denial. The planning and zoning recommendation is recommend a two-year extension on paving. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Yeah, thank you Mayor. If I would have known, I would have saved you from reading all that. But the, the family and the lawyer both have asked to continue this for 30 days.
Okay. So there is a motion to continue for 30 days. Can I get a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you Alderman. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-055, an amendment to Chapter 155, Sections 155.001, definitions, family and to clarify numbers for family care and group community residences. The Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is, had no analysis to offer regarding the text amendment. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is, Corporation Counsel presented and discussed a floor amendment which is stamped as received March 20th, 2024. The floor amendment stamped as received March 20th, 2024, amended the original text changes referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission as follows. Type C family was changed to not more than five unrelated persons from four. Family care residences were removed. Group community residences were changed to a group of six to 15 unrelated persons from seven to 15. Sections 155.053, spacing requirement and state licensing, and 155.211.1, CPU for not complying with the spacing requirement are stricken in their entirety. The various places in the code were cleaned up to reflect these changes. The following amendments were made to the floor amendment marked as received March 20th, 2024 by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Amendment number one was to add group community residences as a permitted use in the H3 district. Amendment number two was to strike but such term does not include current use of nor addiction to a controlled substance from the definition of disability under Section 155.001. And amendment number three was to align with federal law defining family as two or more persons related by blood, marriage, or adoption. And that obviously includes children placed by the state living together as a single housekeeping unit in a dwelling unit and household to be defined as both types B and C. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is approve the March 20th, 2024 floor amendment with the three amendments listed above. The Chair will now entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to adopt the floor amendments stamped and received on March 20th, accepting the floor amendments one and two.
Okay. We have a motion. Can we get a second? We have a second. Any discussion on the motion? So the motion was to approve the floor amendment stamped received March 20, 2024, and amendments one and two. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you. Corporation Counsel, could you please explain the consequences of accepting those amendments?
Sure. So we put, we put forward the amendment stamped received as a, as a result of the Valencia v. City of Springfield and US, United States of America v. City of Springfield federal case. That was filed in 2016 and we just resolved it finally in December. You might remember, we got an order of injunctive relief which prohibited us from enforcing this section of our code because it was found to be discriminatory. This amendment changes the definition of family to be inclusive, to eliminate the discriminatory terms and usage of family and bring our code, align our code with that order and, and with that case.
Okay. So if we accept the amendments from planning and zoning, does that, is that still in compliance?
So if we accept all three amendments that are proposed, then my, then we would, we would be subject to challenge. And, and we could find ourselves in a court case again litigating the, whether or not splitting the definition between family and household, which is an undefined term in our zoning code, whether or not that discriminates against those classified as households because they're not included in the term family.
So in essence, if we accept these, these floor amendments from planning and zoning, we are opening ourselves to additional lawsuits by maintaining language that would appear to be discriminatory?
Yeah, I, I would anticipate a challenge if we, if we accepted amendment three.
So the Alderman's motion was to accept amendments one and two only?
Okay. And then, so I have a question about amendment two. Is that, if we, if we, if we take amendments one and two and not three, are we still in, in keeping with the spirit of what you were trying to draft originally?
Yes. And, and we support, we support amendments one and two. I can defer to, to my co-counsel Linda on the discussion that took place around amendment two at, at the zoning board because she was, she was present there, but we support both of those amendments.
Okay. No, that's, I just wanted to be, I just wanted to be real clear about what we were doing and so, thank you.
Any other discussion from the council? Seeing none, the clerk said that someone did sign up to speak on the zoning item. Catherine Heffernan, are you in the audience? Do you want to speak on this? The clerk gave me a sheet that you signed up.
You got to come to the podium ma'am.
Do you want to speak tonight?
Yes, I do.
Okay, then you would need to come to the podium. We need to start the clock for five minutes, please, for the speaker. Please state your name and address for the record.
Catherine Heffernan, and I prefer just, you're resident of Springfield, that's okay?
Okay.
And so just for clarification on my part, Alderman Redpath has already motioned for accepting the recommendations from, for the amendments one and two, but not three. Are we still discussing three?
We're discussing all of it. We did hear it when the chief was up there. Can, does it move closer to you at all ma'am? That, nope.
There we go.
Okay, I guess so. I don't know what happened there because when the chief was up there, I thought it was working.
I texted Tony on it.
Okay. Yeah, if you'll just project right now, thank you. Someone from the clerk's office will come get those from you and hand them out. Oh, thank you Nicole.
Okay, is this better? Can you hear me now? Great. One second. All right. So, as you know, my name is Catherine Heffernan. And as you're probably aware, I have the pleasure of serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission for the city of Springfield. Firstly, I wanted to say I'm grateful to each and every one of you for your time and commitment to the city of Springfield. Because I know you, you really take into account the importance of this, these issues and how they affect, you know, the citizens at large. As you know, the purpose of these three, all three amendments is to make our code more consistent with the federal government to mitigate our liability as Corporation Counsel basically already laid out. The recommendation from Planning and Zoning on the definition of family, I think is a step in the right direction. But as I thought about it more, questions did arise in regards to its application and I think that there's room for improvement, hopefully addressing Corporation Counsel's issues. So I had some important clarifying and conforming language that I'd like the council to consider. In your handout, you'll see that many of the federal agencies define family in essence the same way. For brevity, I'll list it here. And you can see that the, among these agencies are the Census Bureau, the US Department of Housing and Development, Health Resources and Services Administration, and even the Illinois Municipal Code. And they all define family in essence as one or more persons living together, related by blood, marriage, or adoption. However, the current recommendation from Planning and Zoning doesn't include the individual. So both the Fair Housing Act, which was what started the lawsuit back in 2016, and the Illinois Municipal Code specifically include the individual, considering the single person as their own family. So to be consistent, I would like to recommend that family is defined as a single adult or two or more persons related by blood, marriage, or adoption, including children placed by the state, living together as a single household, housekeeping unit in a dwelling unit. This would make the zoning code consistent with government agencies' definitions at large. And this brings us to the term household. I'm glad Corporation Counsel brought up that household is not defined in the city code because it is used as a noun under the definition of duplex, which I think is, is reason enough to actually have it defined or change that part of the code. And the federal agencies that use household essentially define it as all individuals, regardless of relation, living together in a single living unit. So this could include this, single families or multiple families. It could include unrelated or related individuals. And this is just one reason why I think that the household should be broken up into three categories as a definition. As opposed to the two, there's two definitions of household laid out by the Planning and Zoning. And you can see this on page three of your packet. It'll probably make it more clear the distinction between planning and zoning and what I'm trying to suggest. So the three different categories of household. One would be the family of any number living in the same dwelling unit. The second would be up to five unrelated adults, each of whom has one or more minor children, including foster children placed by the state, living together as a single housekeeping unit in a dwelling unit. And the third would be a group of at least two and not more than five persons, all of whom are adults, living together as a single housekeeping unit in a dwelling unit. Now, why? The first category is basically for continuity of language, that it makes sense to include the single family, or include the single family as a part of a household because every family is a household, but not every household is a family. Two, the second definition, basically is, is mainly focused on the safety of children who are in households with multiple families. And it ensures that other families in the same household who also have children and arguably lower the risk of misconduct because of custodial parents or legal guardians, they, they have a stake in the game. And the last one, the third definition would not pertain to any children at all. It would only, solely be a household of up to five unrelated adults. And I will really wrap it up here in just a second. So of course, as you know, the code cannot foresee all situations or account for extenuating circumstances, which is why we have the variance process. But it should be making every reasonable effort to promote the health, well-being, and safety of our citizens. And these definitions would help protect our most precious and vulnerable citizens, our children. As I'm sure you'd agree, nothing is more important than the protection and rearing of our children. So I would urge the City Council to confirm these definitions to the zoning code because it is a viable and appropriate approach. It is, extenuating circumstances can still apply for variance. And most importantly, it does conform and clarifies our code to be consistent with federal agencies' definitions. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Any council members have any discussion? Alderman Gregory.
Thank you Mayor. And I guess it's. Thank you.
Or ma'am, or miss, or sorry.
Mrs. Heffernan's.
Sorry about that. Yes, sir.
No, no, thank you. Corporation Counsel, I'm, I'm, I'm sort of perplexed on the, the foster children portion of it. You know, as a former foster child, that sort of worries me a little bit. I know every family I lived with was family. So does this? I know every family I lived with was family, so I, does this, you know, how do we, how do we make sure we protect? I, I, I think what the young lady spoke on was pretty reasonable. It wasn't, it wasn't anything that, that we shouldn't be able to handle.
So our current, the definition of family as proposed in the March 20th amendment, it specifically includes adoption, including foster children placed by the state. That's, that's in the definition of family, which is one or more persons related by blood, which is subtype family A1, or then type B is, is two unrelated persons and their childrens, including foster children. So if, if there's a, a cohabitating couple with foster children, that would be considered one family under, under that proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Alderman Gregory?
No.
Okay, Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank, thank you, ma'am. My question is of Corporation Council, you know, these suggestions that were just brought forward to us, have you had an opportunity before, just now, to see these?
We have. The, the public comment tonight was very, was very similar to comments made in the official capacity of the zoning board, and there was a, a robust discussion during that meeting that's been summarized in your packet and our office's position on the comments that were, that were brought up today. I, I believe that, that by distinguishing between family and households in our zoning code, which is different from different definitions, it's different from the census, but in our zoning code, if we're going to make that distinction, I think we are opening up ourselves to challenge because we would be excluding the exact type of, by, by, by stating household instead of family, we're going to be allowing the exact type of household there that challenged our zoning code would again be treated separately or defined differently and, under our code. And if you look, we have single-family residences. So we would go through and we'd change that to family and household, family and household, and have that duplicative definition, but I think we would be opening ourselves up.
Your recommendation is to follow Alderman Redpath's motion?
Yes, that is what I recommend.
Thank you.
Alderman Williams, do you have a question?
Yes, ma'am. So, you know, culturally, this could be problematic. I, I feel that, well, let me just ask it this way. If two families live together, what does that make them?
I, I think that gets to the heart of this, which is, how are we defining family? But if, if you mean two, two married couples living together in this-
I mean, an aunt and a niece are raising their kids together in the same house. Are they a family or are they a household?
We are asking them to be defined as a family. That is what the March 20th amendment put, which gives the three definitions of family. That would include, that would be a family under our definition, not a household.
Okay, so I, I appreciate that because that helps me go a long way with this because I have a lot of those situations. Again, different cultures do different things, you know, with the grandmas raising the kids and then this one raising them. Then I have some in my ward where, where they all come together and live together. And I just want to, you know, be ready for that, you know? So I appreciate that answer and, and I'm hoping, I think we're going to have to have changes, you know, over time, maybe. I don't know, so.
Any other questions, Alderman Williams? Any other alderpersons with questions? Okay, so the motion on the floor is to, it's not, we're done, we had our five minutes.
I do think that something was misrepresented.
So the, the motion on the floor is to accept the planning and zoning recommendation to adopt the floor amendment stamped received March 20th, 2024, and amendments one and two. We had our discussion, is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. The motion, the voting is now open. And the motion passes with nine voting yes and one voting present. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2024-009 for the property located at 1530 South Fourth Street. The petitioner is Brick City LLC, Series Four. The present zoning classification is R2, Single Family and Duplex Residence District, Section 155.017. Requested zoning relief is reclassification to R3B, General Residence District, Section 155.018, and to vary Section 155.480I, Landscape Screening and Lighting Regulations, Transitional Buffer Yard Requirement and Landscaping to Reduce the Transitional Buffer Yard Along the East Property Line from 10 Feet to Zero Feet. The Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation is Approval. The Planning and Zoning Recommendation is Denial. The chair will now entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the Sangamon County, Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission staff recommendation and grant the variance.
Okay, we have a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation as Approval. Any discussion from the aldermen or alderwomen before we go to citizens who have signed up to speak? Okay, seeing none. Oh, alderwoman, no triana, you want to speak? Go right ahead.
Sure, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so we're going to hear from some folks in the audience about this. This is something that I have had in front of me for over a month. I actually attended the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission where this was decide, where this was debated previously, and I've got to say that all the complaints that I have received feel personal. They feel like a personal attack. The, the, an email I got today from one of the people who you'll hear speak referred to multi-unit properties as rodent warrants. I was a renter all my life until 2019. Renters deserve a place to live, so we'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, alderwoman. Any other, oh, Alderman Redpath.
Corporation Council, is this a valid petition? There's a petition here, is that a valid petition?
Do you want my copy?
No, it was, it's not a rejector's petition and it wasn't filed in timely fashion.
Yeah, this, this is stamped received May 21st now.
Thank you.
Okay, any other alderpersons have discussion before he brings citizens up to speak? Okay, seeing none, the first person signed up to speak on this subject is Michelle Gillen. Is Michelle here? Okay, if you could use the fancy microphone instead of the one on the podium and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Michelle Gillen. I live at 1512 South Fourth Street here in Springfield, Illinois. I was actually expecting my other neighbor to speak first because he has a lot more to say about the situation as he has lived in the neighborhood much longer than I have. But I do have a connection with it as my grandmother had lived there for over 30 years between the 1940s to the 1970s. But I'll go ahead with my speech even though it set more to follow Lars's. This should be an easy part of your evening. You should have the email I sent to all of you early this morning. If you read it, you know my story. You should each have the copy of the petition that you see that now doesn't seem to be an issue anymore, that I circulated from the 1400 through the 1600 block of South Fourth Street. There are also signatures from other people who found out what my neighborhood was pursuing, and they wanted to show their support. You have an opportunity in your position to protect peace of your city every time you come here to act on Springfield business, and it's done one vote at a time. Consider the position of the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission on 1530 South Fourth Street and honor the decision to reject changes requested by Brick City LLC, unlike the decision the city council made 14 years ago for Brick City LLC Seth Mullen, to a property adjacent to this one. I'm asking you to please reject this ordinance. Vote no.
Thank you, ma'am. The next person signed up to speak this evening was Lawrence Gatos.
What do you mean?
Thank you, sir.
I have a prepared statement I'd like to, um, my name is Lawrence A. Gatos, and I live at 1529 South Fourth, and my home is directly across the street from 1530 South Fourth, and I have lived in this neighborhood on and off since 1961. When I grew up, this 1500 block of South Fourth consisted of primarily single-family homes with only one duplex. And I am here today to ask that the proposed variance from R2 to R3B for 1530 South Fourth Street be denied by this elected body. I hope that the city council will support current city ordinances that restrict single-family homes from increasingly being carved up into more and more apartments per building, and in doing that, support and protect the character and quality of my life in my block and the larger neighborhood in general, not renters, people who own homes and who live in the neighborhood currently. And that's why Michelle unfortunately did not get the, the petition to arrive in time, but she had over 25 signatures on it. People from my neighborhood are really concerned. Anyway, let me finish. I cannot see how additional basement apartments adding to our neighborhood are, are in any way in our best interest. These apartments, by adding density to the neighborhood, also add noise and traffic. This impedes homeowners from enjoying their property, impacts safety in decases, degrades home values. When single-family homes are carved first into duplexes and then worse into triplexes and even quadplexes, which I would add, these are final variances. These homes will always be R3. They will never be turned back into single-family homes. So you are destroying integrity of the neighborhoods. Anyway, when these homes are chopped up, you know, we lose, we lose the neighborhoods, you know? Homeowners are replaced by more and more renters, fewer and fewer people have genuine personal investment in the grand central neighborhood. No rental properties are maintained to the standards of a caring homeowner. Perhaps these increases in apartments may not seem like much, but price sitting on your porch with not one AC unit blasting, but rather three, from not just one nearby building, try sleeping with the comings and goings of not just one family and their guests, but the comings and goings of multiple people in multiple units. My neighborhood does not need the additional noise, traffic, and general burden on neighborhood and city resources. Adding a basement apartment to an already duplexed building realistically means there could be six vehicles associated with one building. I mean, oftentimes, we are talking couples, are we not? This means more vehicles are parked in the street just at the same time when Fourth Street is very likely to become busier as it is in transition from two-way street to, or from a one-way to a two-way running through town. Again, this does not seem like a wise combination for my neighborhood. Brick City LLC has received their past variances at 1522 South Fourth from R2 to R3, leading to the question of when does this practice stop? Ordinances exist to protect neighborhoods, but what good are they if they can simply be overridden by variances? Currently, there are two duplexes and one quadplex in my box, in my block. All these apartments are owned by Brick City LLC. Brick City LLC has had construction ongoing at 1534 South Fourth for some months, and according to the FOIA request that I have obtained from city clerk and then our president in the building, there have been no building requests issued for that work prior to the zoning meeting on April 17th. I pretensively witnessed multiple trucks of concrete delivered to the proposed basement apartments, as well as installation of an egress window, and it appears as if Brick City LLC has little or no regard for city ordinances in the permitting process and assumes that this city council will be not, not be concerned with non-permitted work at 1530 South Fourth. The zoning commission voted overwhelmingly to deny the requested rezoning on April 17th. The zoning commission citing issues with parking and traffic, as well as the cost to the city to move the telephone pole and associated guide wires. Brick City LLC also owns the property directly north of me at 1525 South Fourth, and I've already talked with the owner, and they spoke about installing an egress window on that property as well. And this intent to triplex 1525 is, or 24, 1525 South Fourth is also evident by the three gas hooks and three electrical boxes that are already installed in that property. I mean, are we going to give somebody who's already assuming, I mean, this guy's assuming that he's just going to get a brother stamp? Anyway, if this variance is approved, Brick City LLC will continue, will proceed to change the inherent nature of a beautiful Springfield neighborhood and push it further into simply being a block of apartment complexes. And mark my word, 1525 South Fourth will be the next property that Brick City will attempt to triplex, and this would mean 10, 10 apartment buildings in three homes. Please do not allow this corporate developer to destroy the integrity of one of the city's lovely historic neighborhoods. This elected council is my last resort, other than moving out of the city or to another neighborhood with strict covenants and HOA. The original zone was designed to protect we, the people, from just these sorts of corporate encroachments. Support the homeowners, not corporations. We, the homeowners, are the anchors of this and so many other neighborhoods. Please consider the importance of protecting neighborhoods like mine by enforcing established ordinances that keep neighborhoods stable and livable. Finally, I will add that this, that there are many other residents in my neighborhood who also want this zoning variance denied, as evidenced by the signatures on the neighborhood petition that was submitted by my friend Michelle Green, or Gillian.
Sir, your time is up.
This body denies this request.
Thank you, sir. Do I have any alderpeople who have discussion or questions?
Point of order, if I could, the motion-
Right, sorry, the alderwoman for the ward wants to speak too, but go ahead.
No, he, go ahead.
Well, I just want to get a clarification because I think the motion was to deny this, this project, but is that correct?
No.
The alderwoman's suggestion was to accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff Recommendation as Approval. Right, alderwoman?
That's correct. Yes, and did you have any?
Because they said to vote no, and I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Oh, okay.
Alderwoman No Triana, you have something to speak?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. So, just to be clear, I emailed this to the residents who contacted me, and I sent it also to you all, but I just want, I think we could benefit from hearing the staff recommendation for approval. It says, while R3B is not in accord with the city plan designation, it is felt to be an acceptable variation due to the trend in the area, including but not limited to the fourplex immediately to the north that was rezoned to R3B in 2012, and the apartment building to the southwest of the subject property. For the variances, the adjoining fourplex to the north and the apartment building across the street constitute a trend in the area that creates plight for the subject property due to its location. Also, the parking area will be paved like the parking area for the four, fourplex immediately to the north, the standards for variation are met. And just would-
I have a question.
Ma'am?
No, ma'am, you- Okay, I just wanted to know-
Sorry, alderwoman, you can continue.
Sure, thank you. So I have actually, I, I wasn't going to share this because it's personal, but I feel like, just to, I, I feel like sharing. So I actually looked at this house at 1530 to rent when I was considering buying in 2019. It is a very nice house on a very nice block, and people want to live there.
Go ahead, alderwoman, it's okay.
Okay, so, so I'm just saying that just because you can't afford a home, just because you weren't blessed with inheriting a home, doesn't mean that you don't deserve to live in nice parts of the city that are proximate to shopping and eating and so on and so forth. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, alderwoman. Any other alderpersons, aldermen or alderwomen have discussion? Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Those opposed, please vote no. Voting is now open.
This is strong.
And the motion passes with eight voting yes, two voting no. The next item on the agenda is docket number 2024-010 for the property located at 1601 and 1605 South State Street.
You're being changed.
Ma'am, please do not interrupt the meeting. The petitioner is C E H O G one LLC. The present zoning classification is Office District, Section 155.020 for 1605 South State Street, and R2, Single Family and Duplex Residence, Section 155.017 for 1601 South State Street. The requested zoning relief is reclassification of 1605 South State Street to R2, Single Family and Duplex Residence District, Section 155.017, and for 1601 and 1605 South State Street, a variance of Section 155.068A and B, garages, accessory buildings, or structures for a zero-foot- for a zero-foot side yard setback instead of the three-foot required by code to permit construction of a zero-lot line detached garage along the south line of sixteen-oh-one and the north line of sixteen-oh-five. The Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. The planning, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is concur with the Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation for approval. The chair will now entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the approval of the proposed zoning.
So we have a motion on the floor in a second to, uh, rec, to, to accept the Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation as approval. Any discussion on this item from any aldermen or alderwomen? Seeing none, and no one has signed up to speak, the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with ten voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is docket number two thousand twenty-four dash zero one one for the property located at eight-sixteen Rock Dirkson Parkway, parcels one, two, three, five, and six. Parcel four, thirty-one forty East Elm Street. Parcel seven, eight forty-second North Dirkson Parkway. Parcel eight, thirty-one oh eight East Elm Street. And parcel nine, thirty-one sixteen East Elm Street. The petitioner is RR Family LLC. The present zoning classification is R1 Single Family Residence District Section one five-five-point-zero-one-six. Parcel four and a portion of parcel three, B1 Highway Business Service District, Section one five-five-point-zero-three-three. Parcels one, two, and six. And B2 General Business Service District, Section one five-five-point-zero-three-four. Parcels five, seven, eight, and nine, and a portion of parcel three. Excuse me. Requested zoning relief is reclassification to B2 General Business Service District, Section one five-five-point-zero-three-four, and variance of Sections one five-five-point-zero-three-four General Business Service District to permit an I1 Light Industrial Use in the B2 zoning district to allow the use of road-building farm implement and machinery or similar-type equipment sales, rental service, repair, and storage yards with no limitation on lot area per establishment, and one five-five-point-zero-one-one-two surfacing to allow the parking and vehicle storage areas to utilize a rock or asphalt milling service. One five-five-point-zero, zero-six-one, basic yard requirements, and one five-five-point-zero-six-three required yards for lots adjoining residential districts to allow the continued storage of machinery and location of buildings as presently located along the south and east property lines, and the continuation of the existing fence line located on the east side of parcel five to the north, on the remainder of parcel five, and on parcel four to the Elm Street fence line that will be installed, and one five-five-point-four-eight-zero landscape screening and lighting regulations to allow the new fencing and other improvements as described in the petition and maintain current fence lines along the south and east portions of the subject real estate. The Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval of the rezoning to B2 and the requested variances. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is concur with the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation with a dust mitigation plan. Chair will entertain a motion.
Madam?
Mayor, I would recommend and ask that we approve it as the commission has suggested.
Would that be with the Sangamon County Commission or the Planning and Zoning with the dust mitigation?
They concur, so both.
Well, it looks like the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended a dust mitigation plan as well.
Well, it's just a. I just recommend.
So which one do you wanna accept?
I just wanna, yeah, the, the one that includes the dust for sure.
Okay, gotcha. So there is a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
To approve the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation, uh, which is to accept the recommendation with a dust mitigation plan in addition. Uh, any discussion from any alderpersons on this particular item? Seeing none, voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with ten voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is docket number two thousand twenty-four dash zero one two for the property located at seven-sixteen Sloan Drive. The petitioners are Allison and Zachary Rennerberger. The present zoning classification is R1 Single Family Residence District, District, Section one five-five-point-zero-one-six. The requested zoning relief is variance of Section one five-five-point-zero-zero-one, accessory buildings to allow the construction of an unattached twenty-by-twenty-seven pool house off of the northeast corner of the existing home to include a storage room, twelve-by-six by thirteen, bathroom wet bar, seven-by-six by thirteen, and a covered patio fourteen-by-twenty. The Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Staff recommendation is approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation is accept the recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission. The chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. Oh, sorry. The motion passes with nine voting yes and one exiting the room. I was waiting for no reason. The next item on the agenda is docket number two thousand twenty-four dash zero one three for the property located at nine thirteen, nine seventeen, nine nineteen, nine twenty-one, and nine twenty-three North Walnut Street. Do you need me to stop for a minute? Okay, yes, ma'am.
So you don't have to even go through it. So, Madam Mayor, we would like to ask to extend this for additional thirty days.
So I have a motion from Alderwoman Purchase to extend in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. And is there anyone here that's for this or no? Okay, so we'll extend that. And the, thank you, Alderwoman Purchase for that. So that concludes our zoning portion. You made that go faster. Okay, the chair is now going to acknowledge Treasurer Redpath for her presentation of the treasurer's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The treasurer's report for the corporate fund for the month of April, beginning balance fifty-four million, seven hundred, sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred, seventy-five dollars. We took in total receipts of ten million, nine hundred, sixty-seven thousand, four hundred, ninety-six dollars. We had total disbursements in the month of April of eleven million, nine hundred, eleven thousand, four hundred, two dollars, which left the corporate fund balance in the month of April fifty-three million, eight hundred, twenty-four thousand, eight hundred, sixty-nine dollars. The ending general but, balance includes fourteen million, fifty-seven thousand, two hundred, forty-three dollars, which was the April ending balance for ARPA money. That concludes my report, thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve this treasurer's report? In a second, any discussion on the treasurer's report? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. The chair will now acknowledge the council to, uh, direct any questions they may have on the OBM contract report to Director Metzger. Any questions on that? All right, seeing none, we're gonna move on. Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the May seventh, two thousand twenty-four city council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved, mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of the remaining ordinances into the record of this council meeting.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion there? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. The chair will now entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And so the motion passes with nine voting yes, none voting no. Agenda items number two twenty, two thousand twenty-four dash zero eight-nine, two thousand twenty-four dash one twenty, and two thousand twenty-four dash one seventy-eight remain tabled or in committee?
Uh, yes, mayor, um, I'd like to move that we take, uh, twenty twenty-four, one twenty, um, out of committee for consideration and propose, um, amendment number one, which everyone has at their desk.
Okay, we have a motion, can I get a second? So we have a motion and a second to pull two thousand twenty-four dash one twenty out of the committee and then adopt.
Put it on the debate agenda.
And put it on the debate agenda?
Yes.
And then adopt the amendment that was on the desk. So we have a motion and a second for that, any discussion? Alderwoman Comet, it looks like you've signed up to speak? Yes, no, maybe?
Oh, that was just me, uh, getting your attention.
Any discussion on the item? Alderman Gregory?
Corporation Council, thank you, um, Madam Mayor. Um, point information, Corporation Council, can you, can you, um, just give a short summary of this?
Absolutely. So there, there are two changes, um, to, or that, that proposed amendment one does. One is it changes the dollar amount. However, it's, it's not a change from what was discussed when this was placed. This just accepts the option one, which is to continue to provide our firefighters' housing, um, as the construction occurs. The other, uh, change is it removed the exclusion, and that's a double negative, so it removed the exclusion of the, uh, minority business participation requirement, which means, um, that this, uh, this contract will be subject to our, uh, FBE and MBE, uh, requirements.
Okay, all right, uh, I appreciate you, um, and, you know, I just wanna follow up and say, you know, I appreciate O'Shea Builders for, um, taking the time to, um, look at this and, and, and get it right. I, I know, um, it was a big topic for, um, Alderwoman NoTrionno, Alderwoman Purchase. I do stand with them on this particular project. I do see the, the MBA that they will have working for them, so I encourage him and, and the company to, you know, uh, set that goal high for our female participation. Let's try to, let's try to knock it out the water, so I appreciate you, thank you.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. The only concern I have on this is, I think we've had, I guess it was just remediated multiple times, we really haven't had any luck with it getting fixed. Uh, do we have any type of warranty or anything like that on, uh, that, that, uh, if, if it comes back in a year, they'll come back and, you know, are we gonna have to spend another, you know, half a million dollars if it comes back?
I'm looking at the chief, and I don't know if he wants Mr. Lusko to come up too or not.
Are you asking if we have a warranty on the old work?
No, on the new work that, that, what, what they're gonna do. If, if it comes back, what happens? We gotta pay another five hundred thousand or?
Uh, well, that's, that's a good question. I don't know if in the contract it had a warranty, but I would assume there is something. But the idea is that we're not just, uh, painting over the mold anymore. We're gonna take all the wood that's been, you know, then growing in, remove all that and put new.
Yeah.
Taking it down to the studs and removing studs that have mold on them, all of that, and the sheeting, everything is getting replaced.
Yeah, there's a, I mean, their, their work is warranted as far as the, uh, the requirements within is, uh, warranted, are standard warranted, or for work and then all of the, the products.
Okay, I just, I just wanna know.
As far as what they're doing is based on the analysis that was in the RFP that went out that we had, with a professional, uh, professional environmental team come in, do an analysis of what was wrong with the, what was wrong with the, the house, and try to identify what needed to be done, which is what they're supposed to fix.
I just didn't want, I just didn't want this to, if it reoccurs after we spent half a million dollars, and then, you know, two or three years down the road, we're, we're in the same boat we are, we're in now. That, I, I just wanna make sure that we're not having to spend another half a million dollars to fix it, you know? I mean, if, if what they're doing, they say, I, I, O'Shea's, you know, reputable, I'm not saying anything bad about him, but it just seems like we've been doing this over and over and over again, and, and it's time that we put an end to it, so, thank you.
Alderman Redpath.
So, um, we found this in, in twelve, and are we looking at the other, uh, older firehouses for the same situation?
So, yeah, so we, we actually had a mold issue at one of the other firehouses, you know, the one that's in your area, Station Two, a couple of years ago. Um, that was in the brickwork, they were able to come in, um, polish that off, it was remediated, it, it hasn't come back. Um, the idea is, one of the things that we did was we put out an RFP to have the assessments done of the houses, that's in process and should be coming before you, soon, I, I would imagine. Um, and that, that would be a look to make sure that there isn't mold, um, at any of the other houses, but, but yes, uh.
And will there, it, will they be able to identify how we got it? I mean, it, it, is it ventilation problem or?
So Station Twelve was, so, yes, it, it was multifaceted, there was, there was water, there was a ventilation issue, um, and so that's one of the reasons it's so much is because it includes fixing the systems.
So that means that O'Shea in the, in the new firehouses, we, we're, we're, we're causing, we're.
Yes.
Working on it.
Yes.
All right, thanks.
Any other alders that have discussion on this particular item?
I'm sorry?
Any, I just asked anybody else, any questions?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, seeing none, the voting will now be open, thank you, chief. Thank you, purchasing agent Lusko. The voting will now be open, all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no.
Are we just voting on the motion to put it on debate and amend it?
Uh, it's, I'm doing everything in order and it's the next one.
It was, it was a joint motion, so this pulls it and, and votes on the amendment.
So it would be passing if you vote yes. It will be failing if you vote no.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, mayor.
Uh, so the motion passes with ten voting yes and none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number two thousand twenty-four dash one five one, and ordinance authorizing. Yes, direct.
I'm sorry.
I almost called you director. You want a new job, Ralph?
Hey, you know.
Alderman Hanauer, sorry.
I'm not guaranteeing I could do as good a job as our director, so, whatever. I would like to, uh, make a motion, we move, uh, the, the appointments up, up on, uh, one six four, one six five, one six six, one six seven, to, that way we can get those folks out of here.
Omnibus?
Um, omnibus moving them up, I guess.
So I have a motion and a second to do an omnibus vote on items two thousand twenty-four, one sixty-four, two thousand twenty-four, one sixty-five, two thousand twenty-four, one sixty-six, and two thousand twenty-four, one sixty-seven.
To move them to the front of the agenda.
So we'll start going over those. Can I get, all those in favor of moving these up, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All right, I'm gonna read each one of these into the record for a minute, if you're okay with that. The next item on the agenda is item number two thousand twenty-four dash one six four, an ordinance approving the appointment of Mark E. Bell to the Police Community Review Commission. The chair will entertain a motion, oh, never mind, sorry. Uh, the next item on the agenda is two thousand twenty-four dash one six five, an ordinance approving the appointment of Terrence M. Moody to the Police Community Review Commission. Next item on the agenda is two thousand twenty-four dash one six six, an ordinance approving the appointment of Robert L. Banks, Jr. to the Lincoln Library Board of Trustees. The next item on the agenda is two thousand twenty-four dash one six seven, an ordinance approving the appointment of Catherine M. Harris to the Lincoln Library Board of Trustees. So we have a motion and a second, and before we have discussion, if you don't mind, I was gonna have, I know two of these people are in the audience, I was gonna have them come up and introduce themselves. Mr. Moody is here, and Ms. Harris is here, so could you please both come up? And thank you both for serving.
Go ahead, Terry.
My name is, uh, Terry Moody. And, uh, I'm, uh, a commissioner. Just wanna introduce myself, I'll be brief.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Oh, I, I guess they're not hearing, if you can, like, touch the mic, they're not hearing us, my apologies, yeah. They're not hearing you talk. Do you mind saying that again? And, and, oh, they want you to pick it up, and then can you?
Like you're doing karaoke, Terry.
And, and maybe tell the council a little bit of your history, if, just where you retired from, maybe?
Uh, Terry Moody and I grew up in Springfield. I'm a retired FBI agent, I spent thirty-three years. Before that, I was a, a licensed certified public accountant in Springfield. I left for eleven years, returned, uh, retired, and now I'm a licensed private investigator. So I think I can rely on some of my experiences to help on this commission.
Awesome, thank you. And Alderman Redpath wants to speak to you.
Well, usually I grill somebody like you when they come up here, you know, being a former law enforcement guy myself, but, uh, I just wanna tell this commission, tell this council that Mark Bell and Terry Moody are gonna be two great assets for us on the, on the police, uh, commission. This, uh, Terry obviously has the experience, they, and he's a landfill grab for you guys today.
All right, all right.
But, uh, but, uh, thank you for coming to serve, Terry, and, and Mark also, and of course, the other, the other two's, uh, Mr. Banks and Ms. Harris, uh, quality there all the way around, we, we love you guys, so, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Harris, we get to get you to introduce yourself again.
Good evening, my name is Catherine Harris, and I am a native, a native of Carbondale, graduated from SIU, Go Saluki Dogs.
Go Salukis.
And, um, I served as the interim director of our local public library here for some months from like June to October, while we were looking for a permanent director, which we did find. which we did find. And I am pleased to be considered to be on the board of trustees for our public library. I think I know a little bit of something about libraries. Having, it's the only job I ever had. And my daughter said, Mom, what would you do if you weren't a librarian? I said, I don't know. I'd probably have to go to the library to get a book to find out what I could do.
Oh, well played. Good to have you.
Thank you for all of your service, Ms. Harris. We appreciate it.
We love you.
Thank you all.
We do love you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so we have a motion and a second to accept all of these. Uh, any further discussion from any Aldermen or Alderwomen? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the...
Oh, didn't take it.
Motion passes with ten voting yes, none voting no. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is two thousand twenty-four dash one five one, an ordinance authorizing a professional services agreement with Art and Fox Shift LLP as outside counsel for assistance with the two, two thousand twenty-four affluent limit, limitation guideline rule in an amount not to exceed two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and authorizing a supplemental appropriation of the same amount to fund said project and further authorize the use of the Environmental and Regulatory Initiatives and Rebate Fund, ERIRF, for said project for the Office of Public Utilities. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number two thousand twenty-four dash one five one on final pass.
Go move.
We have a motion and a second, and then it looks like we're into discussion now. Alderwoman, no triano?
Mm-hmm. Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, everyone will see in front of them, um, hopefully can shuffle around. I have, uh, proposed amendment number one to twenty twenty-four one fifty-one. And so basically, all this does is it allows us to retain this firm, um, but it caps the spending, um, for this first round at fifty thousand dollars. And, um, that is basically so we can make sure that we're being deliberate and taking our time and not jumping to, um, fighting to compliance, um, and just essentially getting, um, their expert opinions to see, um, do we have a case here against the EPA? This is a major undertaking, as, um, Debbie had mentioned last week. Um, and I just want to be sure that we are being deliberate and discussing this openly, so folks can come, um, and, and be involved in this decision, um, because deciding not to comply with the EPA is a big deal. Thank you.
Any other Aldermen or Alderwomen that have discussion about the, so we have a motion and a second to put this on our agenda. Did you get any motions for this or not?
Oh, did I move?
Not yet.
Okay, I move that we amend this, uh, ordinance with proposed amendment, um, number one to twenty twenty-four one fifty-one.
Which is what you just spoke about, right?
Yes.
So we have a motion and we have a second from Alderman Williams. So now we're in discussion on the amendment itself. Um, I have three of you signed up. Does anyone want to talk about the amendment or the ordinance itself?
The amendment for amendment.
Amendment, probably amendment, yeah.
Amendment. And are you amendment? Okay, then Alderwoman Conley, you're first.
Thank you. Um, and if, uh, Debbie Williams from CWLP could come up.
Thank you, thank you very much. I, I understand, oh, you, you probably have to pick it up and walk around.
There we go.
Um, I, I understand the intent behind this, this amendment, um, and I do, I do see, you know, I've had a number of people reach out with concerns about the city proactively fighting US EPA on changes to our, um, our, our compliance path with their new affluent guidelines. So, couple of questions for you, and if I forget some, I'm gonna come back to them, so don't walk away, Debbie, please. Um, first of all, I, I've, I'm still having concerns about how, and no one's really come up with a very good compelling argument about how what we're doing currently, which is pre-treating our waste and then sending it to yet a second treatment center for, before it's discharged, and then maintaining our fly ash as a beneficial reuse that can be, instead of going to a landfill, is diverted from a waste stream and, and sent to concrete. Right. So, um, my concern, I guess kind of maybe the first question, um, do we have existing affluent, um, citations or violations from our, our, the discharge that the city, and when I say discharge, I don't mean directly, but you know, from our pretreatment to the pretreatment. Are there any violations that we're in for what we, um, what we sent to the, the county's treatment center?
No, we have, uh, permits with the county for the stuff we send to the POTW that we have to comply with, and then the state permits are for our direct discharge to Sugar Creek, and we haven't had any, um, water violations or citations in my tenure since twenty sixteen, so yeah, about seven and a half years.
And those include, um, um, affluent guidelines for heavy metals and?
The, the numbers that we, um, have to meet under the twenty twenty-three rule, I'll say, twenty twenty rule that we had to meet in twenty twenty-three, where I've said the other, um, plants aren't really doing that yet, are very, very low. Like, um, I think mercury is in nanograms, like thirty-four nanograms, which is, I mean, it's a very kind of infinitesimal amount, but it, we do measure, we do meet it, and when it goes to the sanitary district, it gets further treatment, which, um, then makes its way to the sludge. So it had some percent removal on top of what's in the rule now.
And they can't operate without that agreement with the city, is that correct? I mean, we cannot send anything to them without our own permitted discharge that then goes to their?
Right, they're required to give us some, they have local limits that they come up with on their own, but they are required to regulate us under this rule.
Okay, and then, um, so, tell me, how much of our fly ash do we dispose of currently in landfills?
Oh, none of it goes to landfills. We've tried to send hundred percent of it to, uh, beneficial reuse and, and concrete cement. Sometimes when we're burning all the time at really high loads, it doesn't meet the specs for like ozenga or whatnot, and we will have to use it for mine reclamation type of things. But, so we have other beneficial reuse we can use as a backup if we can't use it for fly ash or cement, but none of it goes to a landfill. We don't have, um, currently any system to send that material to a landfill.
Okay, so if, if we were to follow the mo, this new, the new standard, how much of our fly ash would we be, how would we, how would that change how we handle our fly ash?
I don't think we know yet. I don't think we've totally studied it. Now, there's, the technologies for getting to zero are unproven, right? We know that there are ways to get down to a very concentrated waste stream that has very high levels of these metals, that is in a small amount. So you can get to, the theory is you can get to zero in two different ways. One way is called encapsulation, where you would, um, somehow make it solid. So it would go to a landfill and it wouldn't leach out in the landfill because it would be solid. Now, what I described last week, what people are calling that is just spraying it over the fly ash, and I don't really consider that acceptable or valid thing to do. But it would, we have relatively small amount of fly ash. So, a lot of the encapsulation stuff we're reading implies we don't even have enough fly ash to do true encapsulation. So, but I would, I would, if I had to assume with the limited information I have, I would assume all of it would have to kind of go to some process like this. I would assume it would be a hundred percent and maybe then some. The other methods involve using natural gas, fired heaters to like dry it all up to nothing. So then, we wouldn't have to use our fly ash for that method, but instead, you're using tremendous, tremendous amounts of energy and creating air emissions, um, to accomplish that. So there's, there's negative environmental sides for all the ways they've come up with them doing it. We'd have to look at it and figure out what we could come up with that we thought was the best of those, but I feel very confident in my initial conclusion that of all of those complicated methods to somehow get to zero, none of them are more beneficial to the environment, to this state-of-the-art POTW that we have with tried-and-true old-fashioned treatment that treats a very significant percentage of those metals out of our discharge that we've already gotten to a very, very low number.
Thank you. And so, um, I have to say, I like that this, this existing ordinance has a cap for, um, legal fees, and that's an up to and not a, um, just a default. We're not writing that check.
I'll have to review the bills and...
Right. So, um, fifty thousand dollars, um, and again, I understand the concept behind this, because I think it's good for us as council members and representatives of the shareholders of, of CWLP, which are our residents. It's good for us to be engaged in this process. Is fifty thousand dollars enough to get, um, the kind of analysis of this rule that we need to make decisions, do you think, or?
I don't, I haven't seen, so that's what it says, that we would do fifty thou, thousand, and then we would come. I mean, basically what it said, I, I don't have a problem so much with the number. It's just an arbitrary number. I certainly wouldn't expect that a greater percentage of what, um, you know, when Greg and I talked about the initial bills, if we decide not to sue, I certainly wasn't expecting them to go over that. But it's arbitrary. I don't know the amount. Um, the bigger concern would be that, you know, this is, I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with the idea that that decision comes back as a vote. I don't really think the code is, but I defer, I guess, to Corporation Council about how, you know, this council decides about spending money and whether that's a valid thing to spend money for. But I think the legal decision, um, has to be Corporation Council decision. And I don't think, I think it will hamper us in the time. To go through this again in a month, it's gonna be really problematic for making a decision like this. The, the fees are kind of front-loaded because we're not gonna, we're not trying to get out of compliance. We would want, if we're gonna do this, we want to get into court quickly and try to get a stay and find out, you know, if that's gonna work. If that doesn't work, you know, our time is very limited to come into compliance. So, the, the, you know, we're not gonna just not comply. We're gonna have to proceed to comply and our time is limited. So, if we don't do it, because it's not a good ende, a good endeavor, it's not a likelihood to succeed, um, I'm totally fine with that. But if, but I'm, I don't think it's a good idea to even bother pursuing it if we're not prepared to act quickly and get in there and get a quick decision, because we don't have much time to, to actually comply. We can't spend, waste the time kind of fussing around about whether to do it or not. Like, we either do it or we don't. And I think that decision, I mean, like Greg said, we'll come back and talk to you about it, but I don't think that decision is gonna be something that we want to take many months.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so I echo, you said a lot, but I echo most of what you said. Um, and I wanted to-
Stick together.
Right. And I wanted to just say to Ms. Debbie, so I know that we oftentimes have what's called emergency passage, so if we should come up on those funds running very low, the emergency passage could come forward. But the other question I have for you is what is the timeline? So say, this passes tonight with Alderwoman No Triano's amendment in it, do you guys just start the process starting Monday? Like, how do you know how much money you're gonna be spending, or how this is going to work and how quickly?
Yes, I want them to start tomorrow.
Okay.
They know that. I've talked to them. I mean, I wouldn't be doing this if, if it wasn't, it's, you know, I tried to explain it last week that I think it's important we get outside advice. But I wouldn't be going through all this if my gut didn't tell me that they aren't following the standard and the law that they're supposed to follow when they set this rate. Like, my analysis is telling me they did it wrong, and it's not fair. So, I want someone else's opinion, because that's important, but I've reached out to people whose opinion I respect in this field that I've been in for a long time. I think I, you know, got far enough where they could analyze about what would be involved to commit to this number, so they've had, put some thought into it. But, yeah, I would expect to tell them, okay, yeah, I have authority to pay you, you know, let's set up a meeting next week, do your research as soon as you can. And, I mean, you know, I don't know how long it'll take them to get an answer, but I would expect to start immediately tomorrow. Like, that's my plan tomorrow. Call them, let's go. Get your associates looking at the cases and...
Okay, and, um, I, I received multiple emails asking for me to vote no, and literally was in the middle of the Pride Fest parade and had people telling me to vote no on this. I said, really? So I understand the concern of what's going on and asking for us not to spend two hundred and seventy-five thousand, so I'm sure they're gonna be sending you invoices too, as they're doing their billable hours. So if you get close to that amount, if it should exceed fifty thousand dollars, um, you'll be able to come back to us right away.
I don't, it's not gonna exceed, that's not gonna be the issue.
Okay.
It's not gonna be an issue that I'm gonna exceed fifty thousand dollars in that. It's gonna be an issue that, like you, we'd have to be, that, that fifty thousand wouldn't be enough to file the suit, and we would immediately have to come back if we decide to. I mean, if we don't find, we wouldn't come back. But I would have spent ten thousand or something, and I'd come back anyway, because fifty thousand is not enough for them to guarantee. I mean, this is a cap, you know, they, they are kind of doing us a favor with this cap. That's why we're here now. They're not, I, I don't even know if they'd honor the cap under this structure necessarily, but I would try to get them to.
And if they don't, you'll come back to us and let us know. And then, like I said too, I think with the, if something comes up where it's an emergency, we have an emergency passage, because I've seen that come across our desk a few times, to pass right away because it's an emergency.
Anything else? Okay. Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I won't, um, be long. So, you said something about the sludge. So where does the sludge go once it goes over to the county thing?
So, um, I've never toured the plant, but when we flush our toilets, all going to the same place. Basically, our stuff goes same place. Everything goes when you flush the toilet. Part of that process creates sludge, which they have to appropriately manage at the end and test and all that. So, that's, that's what I mean when I say they treat it further and it ends up in the sludge. Now, our, we have sludge from our process as well, which we also, we manage on site, but...
Okay. So, thank you for that information. Hopefully we can, um, talk about that a little more. But let me ask you this, um, how much, so, so this, this process that the EPA is, is, is asking us to do, or saying that we do, that, that, that we are just in disagreement with, how, how much is that gonna cost us? I think we, we teetered around that a little bit last meeting, and do we know how much?
Yeah, we're gonna have to do a lot more research. I mean, I, I think we said last week, I definitely feel comfortable that'll be over ten million. Um, I don't, if it's over fifty million, that would be bad and surprising, but that would be kind of a range, I think. Is that reasonable, Doug, or am I under S?
I think you're shooting low for ten.
Yeah. No, 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 but I mean, you think fifty is the top end is reasonable?
Forty, fifty million.
Yeah. Doug thinks more like forty, fifty million.
Okay. I, and, and I'm asking, because I just think it's important for us to know, you know, and really have.
Yeah, we want to, I'm asking you to spend twenty, two hundred and seventy, up to two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to find out if the forty or fifty million is needed to comply with the law.
Okay.
And, and just to be clear, that would be a rate increase as well.
Another one.
I, 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 I get you, it'd be a rate increase if we don't have CWLP all together. So I, I, I get it. That's not what we want to do. Um, so, so my, my final question, um, would be, why are we using the, um, rebate funds instead of our cash on the CWLP side?
I went with Doug's recommendation about where the funding should come. I don't think it, you know, I think it's appropriate use of that money, but whether there's money on the other side or not.
Yeah, the, the fund is the Environmental and Regulatory and, or, it's the Environmental and Regulatory Initiatives and Rebate Fund. So this is a, basically more of a regulatory matter. I mean, it does, to me, it's a little bit about the environment too, because what they're proposing, the EPA, is, uh, to me, is more environmentally damaging than what we're doing now. So, it, it does impact the environment in my, in my mind. So that's the reason that we pulled out of that fund, uh, for that.
My, and my final thought, you know, I, I don't have a problem with us taking a look at it to see, you know, if we want to do that or if we're not. I'm not, not happy to try to sue the EPA or anything like that. But, but I, I definitely, definitely think before we make that decision, as a city council, that it does need to come back to us. And, you know, Murdock could advise us, and, and we'll, we'll get in our little room, he'll advise us, he does a great job in that. Um, but I think, I still think that this council should have a right before we just pop out and, and sue, or, or whatever. We, we, we should have, you know, some, some, um, votes on it, some commentary on it, just to see, because everybody up here may not want to, to join in on that, and, you know, some, some will. So I, I, I think that, um, you know, uh, whether it's fifty thousand, whether it stays at two hundred and seventy-five thousand, I, I think there needs to be some language in this, um, Corporation Council that, that it comes back to us before we, um, because this two seventy-five, it, it, it may file a lawsuit, but then to keep working on it, they may need another hundred thousand dollars or two hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, it, it, it can get ugly.
That's the point. And I mean, I'm okay if you look at this vote as that vote, honestly. Like, it, it- Like, because if you're not comfortable with the idea, I mean, I agree, we should have better advice before we make that decision.
Absolutely.
That advice, like we discussed last week, should come to executive session.
Absolutely.
I don't agree that if we are considering suing EPA, that it's a good idea for me to tell everyone on, on TV what my thoughts and strategies are about that case. That is not in the city's best interest for me to discuss that in an open forum. So if you feel uncomfortable with us suing, you know, and it means you want to vote against it, I mean, I'm not sure that that's the end of the world and that's maybe what we do. I know Greg, feel free to totally disagree with me, I didn't, I didn't throw that on you. But I just think that what we discussed last week about Greg coming to executive session to explain the decision is more appropriate than coming back here for another vote.
Right, so a, a lot of times I, I do explain to council and, and make recommendations and then take those and, and we move forward, we move forward with litigation or not. This ordinance, what it does is it, is it will bring it back for a vote. So we will, we will go into executive session because we won't have the spending authority to, to pay the entire bill. Now, this authorizes an engagement letter for that $275,000, but there's no way to, to spend that money. So what this would force us to do is have a discussion in closed session and then come back out and have a vote on whether or not to do that as opposed to, as opposed to me gathering the recommendations and making the final decision.
Yeah, I need to look at the language so that I understand.
Thank you. Thank you, Corporation Council Mayor, for your time. And I, I thank Doug and the young lady there, because, you know, I, I, I think that, you know, questions are good and, you know, I, I respect her opinion and I hope she respects mine, so thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman No Triano.
Thank you, Mayor. So I really didn't want to get into the weeds on this, but first I'll say that it's, the ordinance fact sheet is public information. And on that ordinance fact sheet, it's pretty clear what we want to do legally. And so in, in reading the, the letter that you sent Doug last May, it's pretty clear what our position is on this, that we were coming out of the gate to fight it. So what I'm saying is, we need to stop making these kinds of decisions behind closed doors. These are environmental decisions that impact all of Springfield and, and greater. And we need to stop doing this behind closed doors. We need to give people the opportunity to come and speak on it. And we need to give the council the opportunity to, you know, read a little bit and, and get in the weeds on this, because it's, it's really complicated. But also, it's not, you know? And, and I think it's important for us to pay close attention to it. And, yeah, just, we, we shouldn't be making a decision without public input. And I, I will say, you, in, in your letter, say that you have a plan to reuse the water. You, you guys can reuse the water. Like, you don't have to send it away. There's like too much water?
That's not correct.
No, it's literally in your letter to the EPA. You said you brought in a third party and you did all sorts of tests. And that third party wasn't able to get us to the point where we could reuse the water in Dahlman. But your engineers kept working on it and they found a way to reuse the water.
If you want to talk about the difference, she's talking about the difference between the distillate and permeate, there's like, yeah, whatever.
And I don't want to get into that right now, but I just want to say, this is a complicated issue.
But you said we were untrue, so I, I don't, I guess I don't want to, I understand, but I, I don't think it's fair then if you didn't want to get into it to say I said something not true. I mean, it's not, that's not, it's not an accurate characterization of our comments. We were explaining the technical side to EPA, that the nasty water at the end, there's two waste streams. And some can be reused in certain things and not in others. I mean, it's, it's more complicated than that and I don't think anyone needs to talk about the details of it. But I just, I think I had to respond because I don't want to leave it sitting out there that I said something untrue.
It was, it was, I mentioned that we can't discharge and recycle.
No, we can't recycle the final piece of that nasty, no one can, no one can. They've never, EPA doesn't say anyone can, that's why they spray it over the fly ash.
And I think it's also important for us to discuss the two projects that we undertook in 2020.
I'm okay if you guys aren't comfortable with the ordinance. I'm okay if it gets voted down. It's a tough decision.
No, I...
I went through, this is not the first time that we've considered this. This happened four years ago. We had these discussions behind closed doors four years ago. This time, under this administration, we are bringing these things in advance. I, this is not that different than what we looked at doing the last time the rule was passed. And, except previously, outside counsel was not hired by bringing them here in an ordinance like this. So I've been trying to be very upfront about it. I'm happy for you to hear the public talk about it and if you vote it down, vote it down. I don't think, I just don't think the amendment serves the process better about to come back again and go through this all again. And I don't agree that by being upfront in my comments about what I didn't care for about the rule, that it's the same thing as revealing to the other side litigation strategy and where you think your strengths and weaknesses of your arguments are. And those are things that are kept in executive session for a reason.
So that is not at all what I was saying. I was saying that we have very clearly telegraphed our attention to try, intention to try not to comply. Okay? I, I don't think anyone who has read any of this would see it any different. And that's fine, you know? Let's hire these folks under their $275 retainer or whatever. Let's enter an agreement with that. And then you guys do $50,000 of billable hours to come back and tell us, do we stand a chance? That's all I'm asking.
But that's not what the amendment is.
Yes, it is.
Point of order, Mayor. Mayor, point of order for Corporation Council. We're getting across the road here, we're getting close to pending a probable litigation. And we shouldn't be talking about that out here.
We, we should not get into the merits of the case. Now, this...
We're getting there.
Yeah, well, yeah, and again, it's important for everybody to focus on whether or not we want to retain. And if we do, do we want to retain at $275,000 or at $50,000? And that's, the amendment would cap expenditures at $50,000 without further approval.
Ald, Director Brown wants to say something.
I think just the, just the overall, you know, high level view of it is that, you know, the review of the, the rules so far and the dealings with the US EPA is that we feel that, that basically they've singled out utilities, the city of Springfield, CWLP unfairly. That's the crux of it. It's not almost that really about compliance as much as unfair. And, you know, our viewpoint on what the environmental damage of their decisions might be is our opinion versus their opinion. So that's, that's, that's what we're trying to, you know, see how we're gonna be able to settle that issue.
We have Alderman Hanauer signed up to speak.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. You know, we, the people that are, that are contacting, the bottom line, they, they don't want this because they want the plant shut down. Let's be honest. They want the plant shut down. Now, my ward, when I walked, people said protect the utility, protect it. Now, you know, right now, we've got a certainty on what our rates are. When we, if we shut the plant down like they want, then guess what? We don't have a certainty. What's gonna happen in each ward when those level payment, you know, you, at the end of the year, you could have level payments where you have to, have to, you know, pay quite a bit more because we're buying off the grid. And in the summer, when it's a peak rate, it could be 200, 200 bucks a megawatt hour or whatever, kilowatt, whatever, I don't, I don't know what, I'm not an electrical engineer, obviously. But, but, I, I mean, that's what it's about. We, we allow them and we allow public works, we, we, we put people on retainer for, to do legal stuff for us all the time, because we need second opinions on it. And I think that this is, this is no different than that. And the, and again, the people that are contacting you guys, they want the plant shut down. Let's, let's just not, not even, you can't argue that, because they want it shut down. And what they're trying to do is, they're trying to get laws passed to where it, it'll cost us so much money, can you, can we not have comments in, in there, please? They, because it costs so much money that it's, it's gonna go up to where when we, if we do shut it down, the rates won't, won't make a bit of a difference. They're gonna try to close us down by us having to increase the rates. Now, we've got some big decisions coming up and I guarantee you, they're gonna come around on Ash Pond and everything else, they're gonna come around, they're gonna fight like hell to get the most expensive option there, because they don't care. Seems like a lot of people, they don't even live in the city that are coming up here and complaining. But they don't care. But I can tell you that my residents care and they want that power plant. And, you know, I'm gonna fight like hell for it. And this is, this is something, the experts say they need, they want a second opinion. We need to give them a second opinion, like we've done countless times. I can't count the number of times we have, we have hired engineering firms and attorneys and, and that to get second opinions on things. And I'm voting yes for it.
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to reiterate something we talked a little bit about last week. And, and, and first of all, I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate you bringing this ordinance to us so we can discuss publicly. It is, it's important that we do these things. But if, you know, I feel for you because, those of you who work at the utility on a daily basis and regulatory affairs, because they keep moving the goalpost. We've been proactive, that's why we're in a unique situation. We've been proactive on handling this water and the waste. And we're, I feel that we're getting penalized for it. So having, bringing in the outside expertise, I think is the responsible thing to do. Because, as we heard earlier, Alderman Gregory asked the question, if we would've just said, okay, the rules changed, it's probably gonna be, what? You said 40 to 50 million dollars, no question. I mean, isn't it the responsible thing to do to hire an outside experts when our experts are saying we need a second opinion? I gotta trust that. That's why you're here and that's why you bring people on board that have, do this on a, and know the process, because it is a unique process. Now, to the amendment, what I heard you say, Deb, is that the amendment with a cap of 50,000 and not the original cap, you might as well just come back with the ordinance almost immediately because it's not going to be enough. So I, I, I plan on voting against the amendment. I, I don't think it's responsible. I, I think, I think because we need to follow the direction of our professional staff, get forward. But the way I understand it also, we're, once this, once this evaluation is done, we're going to come back together as a council, we're gonna hear some, hear some responses in executive session, but ultimately make the decision here in the open chamber.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Williams?
Yeah, so, two things. I think we listened last week and we heard you. No one's saying, don't do this and don't, you know, confer with this lawyer. What we're saying is the amendment just lowered the amount and come back, we're here every Tuesday. Come back and get more when it's time to get more, whether it's 50, 100, whatever. But it doesn't have to be, and this is where I feel like you bully when you start saying, because get ready for the rates and get ready for this and that and it's the end of the world when the whole world is changing but Springfield, Illinois. We're the one, you just said it in the last week, we're, we're one. We had to let them know, no, we still do it this way. Everybody else already is. Had you made it by the date, you wouldn't even be included in having to take this action. But you, you, you messed around and messed around and we're saying, go get with your lawyer, get your advice, you just don't need 275 right now. Just start it and come back if you need more. Oh, if, if 50,000 is too low, maybe add 100. If, if the Alderwoman is ready, you know, to accept something like that. But it does not have to be the whole 275 right now, because we're here every Tuesday. And then on the engagement letter that I heard you speak of, I'm hoping in engagement letter, we didn't commit already to, to 275. Or Murd, I don't know who said it, but somebody said something about engagement letter.
That's what I said, this, this would approve the engagement letter. We, we haven't entered into any sort of contract. That's just, they've agreed to cap their fees at 275,000.
Okay, so maybe we can say we can start with 100,000, they go start their processing, who knows? Maybe they'll get an answer before they have to come back with spending 100,000. But all these fear tactics that I'm hearing up here, people I work with for the environment and want to, they just want the plant to run clean and run better. It's not necessarily they want to close down anything. That's what I hear. I don't hear people, I'm talking to, it's not your turn. So all I'm saying is, when our colleagues say stuff like that, and he said it right, he's speaking for his ward. In my ward, which is the plant, the east side, the whole bit, we do want it cleaner. It is an environmental problem and we do have to start action. I don't even know how many projects y'all have done moving us toward complying with anything dealing with renewables. Maybe baby steps, but see, this is why I focus in on the money. That money, that fund that you got this money from, it's a far stretch to try to say this should be used with those funds. You should be using those funds to comply in other areas then, just still environmentally, not build roads, like you said I was trying to do. I'm trying to do environmental friendly and active things that move us forward as a community and quit resisting so much. So you want to do the thing with your lawyer, okay, go do it, but you don't need the whole 275.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can tell that this is getting pretty tense and I can tell through your facial expressions that you're frustrated. So I want to defer over to Corporation Council. It was my understanding that this was a number that you felt comfortable if we did have something come forward. What is your take? Like, where are you at? If, does it need to go up to 100,000? Like, where did the 50,000 come from?
So the 50,000 was taken from the, the general threshold, not the professional services threshold, but the general threshold for, for purchases to come to, to city council. So in my opinion, it's an arbitrary number. It's not based on their hourly rate or their estimates. I think what they want and what CWLP wants is, is the, the full 275. So, so the law firm gets that commitment from the city that if they move forward, they're going to, they, they know what it'll cost the firm and, and they, we know what, what we're, they know what we're committed to. I, I think by doing this, you know, I don't know, I, I know Deb said she wants to contact them tomorrow to get the associates researching, but they're, they're gonna wonder if we're fully committed or not. But, but the, the, the 50,000, that, that was based in our, in our city code, not any particular estimate related to this case.
So from your recommendation, you are also saying that we, that they will feel comfortable from your letter with stating that we are committed to 275, not 50? That's what I'm asking for, for my, my vote to move forward. Where are you at, Greg?
So, so, you know, I, I would like, I would like to, to be fully committed. But I understand that the, the want of council to, to maintain some control. What I, what I would say is if we do agree to the, to the, to the 275, to that engagement letter, we're still gonna have that discussion behind closed doors. And you're still gonna get a recommendation from me. Because, because I'm tasked with controlling the litigation of the city and I want my client's input. And, and I can tell you, even if this is voted down, I think Debbie's gonna call me tomorrow and say, okay, now Corporation Council needs to figure out if we're going to be challenging it and which staff members we're gonna be using internally to, to, to review this. So I think this determination needs to be made. It's an eight-figure decision, so we're going to... It's an eight-figure decision, so we're going to need to, to take an evaluation and look at it. If we look at it and if our, if our experts are telling us, hey, you know, it's not a good idea to challenge it, and here's why, research says, you know, we don't have a good case, then that's what we bring to you and it ends there. If they, if they do say, hey, you know, we got a real shot at it, then we still bring it to you and we get your input on whether or not you want this to go forward. So, so I think that that, that's the determination, and if we can get, get fully committed, then we can do our thing and bring it back to you with a fully, with a, with a, you know, fully filled out research and explanation as opposed to coming back to you piecemeal and arguing this. If they hit the 50,000, we don't have an answer.
Okay, and my final question is, I know you said you will come back to us, so it's been so much conversation, so I'm sorry if you've already said it, with the timeline. So Deb will get started tomorrow, and then will it be like 30 days where you're, you're coming back and kind of just providing us with an update? Or are we just waiting until you say, hey, you ready to tell us what's going on?
I, I think we would provide an update within 30 days. I don't know that we'd have a recommendation within 30 days. I think that that's a lot of legwork, but, but an update, hey, here's, here's where we're at, here's what we're, what we're thinking. I mean, if this is approved, I think we'd be on a conference call with our council by the end of the week.
Okay. I will say to Madam Mayor with closing out my comments, so I do understand where Alderwoman Nutriano came from, and right before the meeting, I asked, I said, I don't know if 50,000 is enough, do we need to increase it, maybe do half of it, and wanted to hear where you came up with that number. But you represent us. You tell us what you think is the best practice too for us to move forward. So if you're saying we need to move forward with the commitment letter of saying 275, you have been very diligent since you've been up here with keeping us in the loop and pulling us in executive session when we need to. So I will vote off of what you just provided to me. So I do understand where you're coming from, and I did say something right before, like, hey, I think we might need to increase that or maybe do half of the 275, but he's saying, well, we need to move forward and that that's what's going to make them feel 100% okay with us. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, Alderwoman Purchase, we are definitely having Saluki night.
We're on the same page.
We are on the same page, and I appreciate you, you actually clarified that in a way that was better than what I had in my head. I would just like to say something for our professional staff. First of all, I've known Debbie Williams since she was an attorney at EPA. I was doing rules at the Pollution Control Board, which was not yesterday. We, I had young children back then, I now have grandchildren. I think we need to be very careful. I agree, Alderman Williams, that we have to be careful not to make accusations about closing the plant and, and, and overinflating that, but we also need to be very careful that we don't undermine the professionalism of the staff that we do have at the utility. And that's, that's one, the one point that keeps coming back to me about this change in the federal regulation. Federal regulations change in a lot of ways, and sometimes those multiple moving parts impact things in ways that may be great for 95% of the industry that they're impacting, but we may fall into a weird little widget where our pretreatment, our beneficial reuse, we're reducing our stream that's going to landfill and, and reusing material that we're creating without investing in a significant amount of additional energy to treat what we're going to be dealing with. I just want to be very clear that I think our utility and the fact we're not having water violations, we're, we're, the utility is doing what it's supposed to do, I don't think we should also make an assumption that because we're asking for outside counsel to advise on significant changes to federal regulations and their impact on the utility, that that automatically implies that our utility is trying to avoid compliance. Because Debbie, you've said it a number of times, this is not about avoiding compliance, it's about the best path to compliance for our utility. And I, I, I just, I want to thank you for that. I want to thank Doug, I think you, you know, you're bringing, there's a thoughtful consideration here. I'm at all times concerned that we're not adding to landfill, that we're, that our water discharges are the best quality they can be, and that we're, we're looking out for what our air emissions are. We know coal-generated power does not have a long future, right? I mean, we know that, that's not really a question. But does this plant have something left in it still? I think we need to know if it does under the current scheme, or if we do need to make a significant investment. And so I just, I'm sorry, I spent most of my career as staff. My, my time as an elected official is, is a blip compared to the amount of time I've sent as staff. And, and I've been in this seat where as a subject matter expert, that level of expertise and that depth of experience needs to be taken into consideration. And so just again, I think we need to be very careful that we're not putting out a message that the utility or the city is trying to avoid compliance.
There's no, I mean, the, the idea would be determining whether this law is validly adopted, not, we're going to comply with the law as it is. We're either going to comply with this law, or if it turns out that this law is overturned because it was wrongly adopted, if that could happen, it's very unlikely, it's very unlikely. But we will comply with the law of what it is. And as we have, as we have, as we complied with the current law unlike any other utility in the country. But I think, you know, what Alderwoman Arturiano talked about last week about what most plants are doing, the older plants are getting an extension to not comply. So they're not cleaning it up. We are cleaner than they are. They are simply getting permission to stay dirty for another 10 years because they are committing to close. Now, that's a valid decision for this council to consider, but this rule would require you to make that decision by next December. We have a very new plant with a very long series of bonds left to pay, and unfortunately, I mean, a private plant could just kind of say, oh, yeah, sure, we're going to close. The only penalty the rule has for lying and just saying you're going to close is that, oh, when you get to 2034, you better put that same equipment on now. But because we're public, because we do this out in the public sphere, we have to be honest, we have to be transparent, and we, I don't believe, and you guys can tell me if that decision is not correct, I don't believe we'll be able to have a decision in 12 to 18 months that we know we're ready to close Domon Four early like that. And that's unfortunately what the other plants are doing. But they're not getting cleaner than we are. I just wanted to respond to that, and I very much apologize for interrupting you and trying to do that.
So we do have a couple citizens sign up to speak, but before we bring them up, we're going to take a roll call vote on just the amendment, because we were discussing the amendment, which is Alderwoman Nutriano's amendment. The ordinance is still out there, so I'm going to ask the clerks to take a roll call vote on the amendment itself.
Alderman Redpath.
No.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Alderman Rockford.
No.
Alderwoman Purchase.
No.
Alderwoman Nutriano.
Yes.
Alderman Carlson.
No.
Alderwoman Conley.
No.
Alderman Donlin.
No.
Alderman Henauer.
No.
It fails, three yeses, seven nos.
Okay, so the amendment is no longer in play. Now, we're just talking about the ordinance at hand, which is ordinance 2024-151. Citizens who signed up to speak on this is Lori McCarrenan. Lori, are you here? I figured we should get the amendment out of the way so you knew what you were talking about, Lori. Please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening, Lori McCarrenan. My address is 1504 South Whittier Avenue in Ward 6. So my statement tonight was all about the amendment, so I'll have to adjust a little bit here. So if the amendment has failed, then I have to state that I'm opposed to this ordinance as it was written, and that's because it's all about the money and it's all about informed decisions. So electric rates do need to stay low, and when money must be spent, it's the city council's responsibility to make an informed decision so expenditures are cost-effective and benefit the residents. Having a municipal utility requires that the city council provides accountability from CWLP for this information. At last week's meeting, CWLP stated some information about the guidelines that it was more harmful to the environment than the current system, but they did not explain the benefit of the new regulations, nor did they explain how CWLP currently disposes of these toxic fuels. There was no explanation how the Water Reclamation District is involved or what they do with the waste solids. So there's no supporting research to show that the new regulations are more harmful than CWLP's existing system. It was also stated last week about that there was no cost estimate on the cost to comply. Last week, there was a guess on the cost based on the past when the old coal plants were in operation, but with the retirement of those three coal plants, the amount of water falling under the regulation that comes from Domon Four is significantly less. So you need an estimate with current data to provide an assessment on the cost of compliance. As Alderman Williams said, we have studies all the time for assessments on these things. Last year, we had a study for the gas conversion, which we haven't seen yet. Tonight, I see there's a new ordinance for a study on the planning and preparation for dewatering the ash ponds. So the cost to implement the compliance needs to be included in this decision. You should have a study on the cost to comply. Before approving litigation, you should have a clearer understanding of how likely the city is to win and what the cost is if we lose. Are there fines if we miss the compliance date? I just wonder if a law firm whose primary environmental business is to sue against compliance and defend pollution is capable of giving an accurate assessment of the cost of compliance? An environmental organization who would not benefit from any decision would be able to give an independent estimate on the cost. So this proposed amendment would have allowed you to get a comprehensive picture before deciding on the litigation to move forward. Also, on the use of the ER IRF fund. So the city code of ordinances states that those monies shall be used for the cost of environmental and regulatory initiatives or for customer rebates as determined by the mayor and city council. So this is an environmental issue, it is a regulation issue, and that you have the decision to make on whether we should use this fund or not. There's a stark difference between legal fees used to fight compliance and fees to work towards environmental protection such as dewatering of ash ponds, or even an IRP. An IRP may protect you from these changes in regulations and make it easier to handle all these blips in the road. The code states, city code states, that the funds are to be determined by you, and although Corporate Counsel said last week that he thought the legal fees were a valid use of the funds, I would suggest you seriously consider the implications of accepting that opinion. It sets a potentially destructive precedent for use of this fund. So it seems that issues like this could be less contentious if CWLP was more transparent in informing the city council about these issues. However, since the transparency was lacking with this ordinance, I was going to support the amendment. However, now I have to say I oppose the ordinance as it stands. But I would suggest that you follow with another ordinance authorizing a study on the actual cost of compliance to be paid for out of the ER IRF fund. So the result of that assessment and the result of the shift assessment, the law firm assessment, would help you make the informed decision that you need to make. And I do want to add that I am a resident of Springfield, I do care about these issues, and I don't expect that Domon Four will be shut down anytime soon. It's about making informed decisions.
Ma'am, I want to apologize to you. I knew nothing about the amendment until I sat in this chair tonight, so I assumed that you or no one else who signed up to speak would have known about it either. Okay? The next person signed up to speak is Anu Parachuri.
I have copies.
We'll have someone come get them for you, and if you could state your name and address for the record, that would be great. Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Anu Parachuri, and I live in Ward 7. The council should deny CWLP's request for money. CWLP has a staggering recent history of non-compliance and poor management. At a minimum, they've had the fly ash release in 2021, the failure to address coal ash ponds by the federally mandated deadline, and the failure to ensure adequate funds for timely and necessary maintenance, such as the lead pipes, to the point where customers will see their rates increase 74% over two years. Meanwhile, certain council members have continued to praise CWLP management despite these failings. I watch the meetings every week, I am seeing this happening. Now, CWLP wants $275,000 for outside counsel with the decision to sue ultimately made behind closed executive session doors. Citizens of Springfield deserve to know whether a lawsuit will be filed, particularly when this impacts taxpayer money, environmental welfare, and human health. According to Debbie Williams from CWLP last week, the previous rule at issue incentivized direct discharge, and yet CWLP nevertheless chose a different method. Now it seems they are complaining about the consequences of their actions, but trying to blame US EPA and asking that the ratepayers cover the cost of that decision. So is this going to be a situation where we delay and delay and delay until the necessary remedy becomes unduly expensive, just like the lead pipe repairs? Last week, Alderman Williams said, we continually resist compliance. He's absolutely correct. Look at the ash ponds where CWLP waited until the compliance deadline to request an extension, further delaying action. I'm also thinking down the road to 2035, when CWLP must reduce CO2 equivalent emissions by 45%, and 2045, when CWLP must reduce those emissions to zero. I'm thinking of CWLP's request for money to explore converting to natural gas, even though Illinois law would still require zero emissions by 2045. Isn't it better to spend this $275,000 on something that moves us forward instead of on stagnant technology that must be phased out in the next couple of decades, or on outside lawyers trying to find loopholes? It seems CWLP is always looking for a way to kick the can down the road instead of immediately tackling the very real and very serious problems that it faces. And ultimately, who suffers? The citizens. But what exactly is the plan here? Is CWLP going to ask for an exemption from the rule or try to get a federal rule overturned? Let's say they succeed in one or both of those. What is the point of fighting rules for fossil fuel power plants when Illinois law and common sense are pushing us towards renewable energy? Again, isn't this money better spent on other environmental concerns? As Alderman Williams noted last week, the ash ponds are in his ward, and for my part, I've heard nothing recently from CWLP or the council on how that mess is being addressed. We don't even know why CWLP can't comply with the new rule. Debbie said last week the rule would require them to convert from indirect to direct discharge, but the rule doesn't expressly require that. So is it a technical issue requiring experts to weigh in? We need more details before handing them this money. And how will this money be used? Again, Alderman Williams pointed out last week that if you come to the council and ask for money, you should be able to articulate what it's going to be used for and wed, instead of just saying, hey, we'd like money set aside just in case. Indeed, the council seems to apply this standard all the time to projects in Wards 2 and 3. It's only fair that the same applies to CWLP. Furthermore, last week, Alderman Carlson asked for a breakdown of the funds to be granted to Juneteenth and other celebrations because he believes this council should be good stewards. A little accountability, you know, in case someone from his ward asks how the money for those events will be spent. Well, I'm from his ward, and I would like accountability for how CWLP spends our money. I am speaking to you all as a CWLP ratepayer and an environmental attorney who previously did enforcement work. And to be clear, my opinions tonight are my own. What I have seen is stunning incompetence and a complete denial of where we are headed when it comes to energy production. Perhaps CWLP and the council want to continue burying their heads in a fly ash pile, but once that ash flies off into the atmosphere like it did two years ago, they will be forced to face reality, and we, the ratepayers, will likely be paying the monetary and environmental price. And I want to be clear again, I'm not advocating for this facility to shut down, I'm advocating for a switch from coal to something better. Please deny CWLP's request and vote no on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person signed up to speak is Bob Cruto, and because I know Bob, I do not see him in the audience at this time. So are there any other, excuse me, alderpersons who have anything to speak on this particular ordinance, 2024-151? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the ordinance, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no.
Hold on.
I'm sorry, do you have a question? Oh, you're helping, sorry.
All right, now let's get to work.
Okay, so the motion passes with seven voting yes and three voting no. The next item on the agenda is 2024-153, an ordinance approving and authorizing execution of a license agreement with Diversified Dock Services LLC for shoreline stabilization work at Lake Springfield for the Office of Public Utilities. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2024-153 on final passage.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. All those opposed, please vote no.
Alderwoman Purchase said she was a yes.
Okay. Thank you. So we have Alderwoman Purchase, just so you know, had to step out, but she was a yes vote before she stepped out. So we have nine voting yes and one voting present. The chair will now entertain a motion before we go to Agenda item number 2024-157 to move to a public hearing and suspend the rules of the regular meeting for Agenda item 2024-157, which is an annexation ordinance. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on moving to a public hearing? Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Are there any citizens in the audience that wish to speak on, and I will tell you what the Agenda item number is, 2024-157, an ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement with WFPL LLC for attractive land with no assigned address located at parcel index number 13-35-200-040 and 13-35-200-042 for the Office of Public Works. Is there anyone in the audience that is here to speak on this particular annexation?
Motion to adjourn public hearing.
All right. Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to adjourn the public hearing. Can I, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion has it. So now we are going to the next Agenda item, which is 2024-157, an ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement with WPFL LLC for attractive land with no assigned address located at parcel index number 13-35-200-040 and 13-35-200-042 for the Office of Public Works. The chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda number 2024-157 on final passage.
Move.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. Just in time. And the motion passes with 10 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 2024-158, an ordinance annexing certain described real estate with no assigned address located at parcel 13-35-35.0-200-040 and 13-35.0-200-042 and owned by WPFL LLC. The chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda item number 2024-158 on final passage.
So moved.
A motion? Do we get a second?
Good.
A second. Any discussion on this Agenda item? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. Oh, wait, Alderwoman Purchase, sorry.
I want to press yes and press request to speak.
Oh, okay. There we go.
Coming along with night.
So the motion passes with 10 voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number 2024-171, an ordinance authorizing execution of a redevelopment agreement and authorizing payment to ESP Properties Two LLC for renovation and purchase of 227 South Seventh Street, Unit One, Springfield, Illinois, with the use of central area tax increment finance funds in the amount of $656,000 through the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Alderman Williams.
Yes, Mayor. Val, if you can come up, please. I just want to clarify some things. So, as you know, and the council knows, we have been requesting and asking for step-by-step, you know, or rules or what you do, what's the process when it concerns the TIF. And to be honest, it's because our TIFs over here don't fly through like this one is getting ready to fly through. So we're trying to learn, well, what are you measuring it by and how does that work? To Alderwoman, I tried to approach her and say to wait until you do your presentation on June the 4th or whatever, and she insisted on doing this tonight. I'm not against this project or what they're going to do with the TIF in her ward. That's fine, because I always defer these kind of things to the Alderwoman. What I'm trying to express to you and the mayor is this is why it's so important to get this process to us on how you do this so that this unfairness feel that I feel don't keep happening. When it's downtown, I can think of Floyd's, I can think of a lot. It just flies through. When it's on the east side, Wards Two or Three, we get 1,000 questions, 1,000 bumps, and 1,000. So I'm just trying to learn, well, what's going on here? What's happening? And I had last week wanted this to hold until after you gave your thing, and then we are starting afoot of doing everything right, but the votes are here to pass this thing. And of course, I'm not against it. I just really wish we get ourselves together here at the city on rules about all our fundings, you know, and how we do all things so that we all can legitimately make better decisions. You know, we can't follow our senior aldermen. I mean, Donaldin, Hannah, and Chuck, they're going to be gone, and we're going to be left. We're going to be left.
I'll still be the senior Alderwoman.
We're going to be left here with whatever gets set in place. I mean, that's not a knock against them. That's just a fact. It's just reality. So we have to start learning to read, dig in, and that's what I've been doing, and prepare ourselves to live with some of these decisions we're making. So this is why I ask for these kind of things.
And as I explained the last time that we prepared this document, I've been working with the mayor so she could go through everything with us. Because of these challenges or the problems that you think you're seeing, I moved up. We will have the presentation next week, and so we will go through what constitutes all the guidelines for a TIF.
And I appreciate that. And that's not to pick on your department. This is what I'm doing with any kind of funding I see come through here as I learn to be a better alderman, because like I just stated, some of the seniors are going to be leaving. Some of us just rely on what they say and follow and not realize, hey, you're going to be stuck with these decisions. Like I imagined, as long as they've been on, they're probably stuck with previous decisions that they think about now and say, wow, maybe I would have done that a little different had I had the knowledge I have today. So I just wanted to say that. I appreciate that you moved it up, and we're going to get it next week.
What I will say to you is that everything that comes out of the Office of Planning and Economic Development follows a specific procedure. And what you're referencing, the project that you're referencing, has been backwards from the beginning. So what I'm going to say to you is that, I think you call it, I think I've heard it called, that we are causing this project to jump through more hoops, okay? It's because it's been done backwards. The project that I brought forward here today, if you'll call him jumping through the hoops, jumped through the hoops all the way through in the department. Unfortunately, because it was done backwards with the other project that we're referencing, you're now having to see the hoops publicly. The people for this particular project jumped through the hoops during the whole process, okay? So it's been done backwards, you know, the way it was brought forward. So now you're publicly seeing what is going on that goes on through every project that we put forward. We have certain guidelines we have to follow. We have to have certain things in order. We investigate, we look at things, we evaluate whether a project is going to benefit the city. We project, you know, we look at a project, does it go along with our plans for the TIFs? And I'll go through all of this next week, Alderman. But for you to say that this is going sliding through is actually not fair, because this project did all the things that we ask of them. There were times we came up, nope, we don't have enough information. Give me more information. We need more information. They could attest to that if you wanted them to. There were times that we had to say, no, this isn't enough information. So just keep providing everything.
So is this their first time getting a TIF?
Yes.
This is. So I think in this city, the reason why this filling is out there is because some are exposed to the knowledge of how it's done better. This is why it's getting ready to be public, how it's done and what's required and all that. So I, again, thank you for that we're going to do this next week, and hopefully nothing, at least from my ward, comes in backwards. Again, to, you know, make that filling happen, we'll just follow what you present.
Right.
That's all I wanted to say.
And again, it was because they came and they talked to us, and we will walk through. We've got another project that's from your ward.
Yes.
And we have already met with them twice.
Yeah, yeah.
We've already met with them twice. They need more guidance. Some people need a little more guidance. We're happy to do all these pieces. We'll meet with them, we'll walk them through. I mean, some people have never even thought of something like a business plan. We'll walk them through, we'll help them figure these things out. But they will come in and talk to us first, let us explain everything there is to know about a TIF. Some people come in, we tell them and explain to them about a TIF, and they go, no, thank you, that's too much work, or that's just too much to do.
I believe that.
And so then, okay, then they walk out the door. Others might talk to us about it, and we might not hear from them for six months, and then they come back, maybe they've gotten some of their ducks in a row. So that is just, we start out, we have a pre-meeting. We don't even get, we don't even talk application first. We talk pre-meeting, we help them understand.
Well, I've been practicing that. So I'm fine with it, and I'm fine with what you're going to do next week, and that'll put us on the right track, I think.
Yes.
And that's the only reason why I was trying to say debate last week, because I was like, wait a minute, we got to at least discuss TIFs again, because this is TIF funds being used.
Correct.
Again, I wasn't against it. I just wanted to get this to come out to the forefront.
Well, I want to thank these developers for sitting through this entire meeting.
Yes.
So hopefully we'll give them a good recommendation. This is a good project. It's $1.9 million project. They're asking for $656,000. They're purchasing the building. The current building they are in is considered a condominium. They occupy the top floor. They want to purchase the bottom level and expand their business. They've been a strong downtown business for years, and they want to stay downtown. It's very important to them to stay downtown.
It's really important.
Right. And I don't know if you gentlemen would like to come up and say anything at all.
I wore out.
He said, "I'm good." He said, "Just vote, just vote."
If I've said enough, okay. And by the way, you've been in to see us four times, maybe? I think four times they've been in the office, so, yeah.
Any other comments? Alderman Williams.
Williams.
I've been finished, thank you.
I've been finished. Alderman Gregory.
My comment is not germane to this particular thing. I will follow up on all business. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. Yep, we've still got some other business to do. Sorry. Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say, coming from the standpoint of my area I represent, Alderman Williams, I think one huge point I have with momentum is our downtown businesses get together and they ask these questions, and I was very familiar with this project of Director Yezo having to ask them for more information. And we also have another project downtown that hasn't been really moving as fast, and I've been in the meetings and we've been on field trips out there. So my stuff just doesn't fly through. There's some hiccups that we go through as well, but I think maybe you could try what I do. We bring all our businesses together, and we kind of talk about this stuff, and we go through the process. We have the momentum on Main Street where sometimes they explain it, and you can even invite your people downtown because it's open to the public, and those are like the series that we do. And so that kind of helps out with the process as well, too, even when we're not calling and asking the city all the time. It's like it's one big family and a community trying to help each other. So I just wanted to say that, and thank you, and thank y'all for staying permanently. Thank you.
Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I will indeed be brief. I just wanted to say thank you very much for your reinvestment in downtown. We don't have TIF districts in Ward Nine, but the downtown area, Ward Five, is the heart of our city, and we need more projects like this. This is exactly what tax increment financing is for, redeveloping our existing buildings, keeping employers, letting the equalized assessed valuation go up, and thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other alders that have discussion? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with 10 voting yes, none voting no. And thank you to the business owners who waited all this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The chair would now like to entertain a motion to put ordinance 2024-200 on emergency passage for the purpose of public safety. We have a motion and a second, and before we have discussion, the ordinance is in front of you, and I would like to ask Chief Scarlett to come up to the podium to discuss why I have asked this to go on emergency passage for the purpose of public safety.
If my teeth start chattering, that's because it's a little chilly.
It is cold in here.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to come up, and all of you know, we've had multiple discussions over multiple years about the block party situation that is happening out of only Springfield but throughout the state and across the country. And it's been my goal, and I know your goal as well, to be proactive in our response and our approach to this and how we can deal with that. And just as past Saturday night was probably one of the worst block parties, and I feel like I say this every time I come up here, but in fact, it was 13th and Edwards area. Our officers were estimating close to 600 to 1,000 people out there. There's dramatic body worn camera footage where a vehicle went speeding through, nearly struck four of our officers, they had to dive out of the way. That vehicle did strike two pedestrians, ultimately crashed. Our officers get out with them, get a gun, cocaine out of the car. There was also multiple other gun arrests throughout the evening. So these block parties are dangerous, and I stand here and assure you again, I want to do whatever we can to make sure that they don't happen or that when they do happen, that we can hold people accountable and responsible. And you have been very gracious to bring certain ordinances forward as far as towing, as far as fines and whatnot. And in consultation with Corporation Counsel, we've asked for this new ordinance to be placed on emergency passage, and I'm going to let Corporation Counsel speak to the ordinance, if that's what you like, Mayor.
Sure. And just so the council knows, I wholeheartedly have my name on this ordinance as a sponsor. It is to help stop the block parties, and it is to fine those responsible for throwing the block parties themselves. And just so the public knows, last year, that police department, we spent the taxpayers to fight these block parties. How much was it in overtime, Chief?
$205,000.
And we're having more block parties earlier now, so that's going to escalate. So in two years, half a million dollars of taxpayer money to stop block parties. We just had an hour-long discussion about $275,000 to save the taxpayers maybe 50 million. This is a half a million for block parties. So that's why this is on emergency passage, because the parties are out of control now. They started earlier, and graduations are coming, and I'm very scared for our public and our officers.
Yeah. So after that, just very briefly.
Sorry. How to follow up with that?
She's a hard act to follow.
Never mind.
Mention the penalty amount, that'll do it.
Yeah. So we are going after patrons and their vehicles and fines, but really the issue is the organizing. So this levies a hefty fine for an organizer. An organizer or promoter of this event can be fined up to $10,000 or the actual cost of the city. So if we have callbacks and callouts and we have 40 officers in an event, we can actually recoup the cost of enforcing the law at these unauthorized block parties. So that's the hammer, and again, it's only, it's for sponsors of the events and promoters of the events.
So at this point, I think Alderwoman Purchase signed up to speak, so go right ahead, ma'am.
I'm going to be very short, but I remember when I was young that we had curfew. So some of the young people that's out there, is there any consequences when they're not of age and they're out past curfew? Is there anything we can do to them as well?
A curfew violation is nothing more than an ordinance violation and some of the similar stuff that we're talking about. Again, the fear is, you know, do we send two officers in a crowd of whatever to grab a 16 or 17-year-old? You know, our officers have to weigh their risk, their own risk versus, you know, what's going on in the community. That's an option. There are several options that we can do when it comes to deployment tactics. I think this is one more option that we need to seriously consider.
That's fine, too. And my last thing I would say is it really bothers me because I've seen one of them that has already taken place, and when you see people who are underage and then you see people who are older than me in these same crowds together, it just doesn't look right. So just trying to figure out how to combat that is a whole issue within itself, and those kids being out there. That's what you really see, a lot of kids being out at these places.
And I think the main thing that we see as a result of these is that the individuals are there, don't want to follow rules, that's why they don't go to reputable establishments. Some are underage, you know, some don't want to pay prices that it costs to get into these facilities, and this really is kind of morphed into this bigger sort of party scene.
Free-for-all.
Yeah, free-for-all involving young kids, adults, and to me, that's dangerous. And, you know, we have to do whatever we can as a council on this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. And Chief, thank you. Thank you to Corporation Counsel. We've been saying this for years, years, and you're right, going after with tickets or toes or whatever, this is what we've needed for a very long time, is to impose significant penalties to people who plan and promote these parties. penalties to people who plan and promote these parties. Because, I mean, when you talk about, just that one example, car taking off, you've got officers diving out of the way, people getting hit, I mean, this mix is so volatile at all times. I really appreciate that this city is taking a step to firmly tell the people who promote and sponsor these, I'm not going to call them parties, I'm going to call them pop-up, I don't know.
Party.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to think of my polite words, it's been a long day. Well, we'll say party for right now. But we need, we send a very firm message, that this is not a community where that kind of behavior is going to be welcomed, and that we will be finding the people who promote this. And they're not promoting it through, you know, smoke signals. We know social media is a great way to find who's doing this, and there are tracks, there are trails that can be followed, and I'm really hoping that wasn't a weather alert.
That's the timer.
Is that the weather?
That was my time, sorry, I'm done.
Oh, I thought it was the weather, I'm like...
And we need another one of those.
We need to use that a whole lot. Thank you, Mayor. I will honor the beeping, and...
All right. Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, thank you, Chief, thank you, Mayor. You know, a lot of these, I would probably say 80% of these pop-up parties occur in Ward Two, and, you know, I would just say not only this, but, you know, I would ask, and I've had some conversations with some of our club owners, to be mindful of what type of events we're hosting as well.
Amen.
Because it just draws over, and it's causing me a headache, right? And it's causing you a headache, and it's causing our mayor a headache. And it's unfortunate that people can't get together and have a good time, because they should be able to get together and have a good time.
Exactly.
But we have to understand that these, you know, 600, 700 people out in the middle of the streets, rolling through yards and things of that nature, it's just unacceptable. We can't have it. I'm up many, 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 many nights of it, from it. You know, and Alderwoman Conley, to your comment, you know, this has been a long discussion about what are we going to do? And guess what, this is still not going to be the end-all, be-all, right?
We don't have a magic bullet yet.
I got the floor.
No, no, I'm agreeing, I'm sorry.
But, you know, because, you know, we can look at three different flyers, right? Some are going to be adults, and then some are going to be 16, 15-year-old kids, right? That, you know, we're going to have to decide, are we going to make them pay $10,000, or, you know, fine them a little bit, or whatever the case might be. So this is going to be a tough task to even, for our police officers to execute. I support, especially for some who continually do this on purpose and think it's funny and stuff. But I do, I do worry about some of our younger generation of young people that's out, but we'll keep working at it. I trust our chief and his judgment and his discretion on how we apply that. So I appreciate you, thank you.
If I could just say one thing, you know, to your point, Alderman Gregory, this is about holding these individuals who we know are responsible for this on a continued basis, who have been told multiple times, not in our city, that these are the people that we're after. And they know the message, they know our message, not in our community, and this is one more avenue to go after them.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any other discussion from council members on the emergency passage ordinance? Seeing none, the voting will now be open. All those, thank you, Chief. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. Maybe voting will go open. Oh, she said no, she can't, so roll call vote.
Point of order, did we technically read it into the record?
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
He said he's... All right. So... Yeah, he wants me to read it in the record, but I'm trying to pull the ordinance here. Okay, so ordinance 2024-200 is an ordinance amending Chapter 110, Article XXXV I of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to special events. So that, we had a motion in a second, we had discussion, that was the ordinance we pulled out of first reading onto emergency passage for tonight. So, because you all agreed to put it on emergency passage when I pulled it out. Yes?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve on emergency passage now. So now, I know that the voting is not going to work, because Nicole said it was on first reading, so we'll do a roll call vote with the clerk, if you do not mind.
Alderman Redpat.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderman Williams.
Aye.
Alderman Rockford.
Aye.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Yes, yes, yes.
Alderwoman O'Tiriana.
Aye.
Alderman Carlson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Conley.
Aye.
Alderman Donnellan.
Aye.
Alderman Henauer.
Aye.
Ten ayes and no nays, Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you, Council, and I promise you, Chief Scarlett and the Springfield Police Department, thank you for this. Are there any unfinished business to go before the Council? Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be very brief. I just want to thank everyone, and as well as you, Madam Mayor, for coming out this weekend. The last two weekends, it has just been filled with a lot of residents from the City of Springfield, and people coming from surrounding areas to support our businesses. All of our businesses had nothing but positive things to say about people patronizing their place of business over the weekend between the Capitol Art Fair, the Pride Fest, and the grand opening to the farmer's market. So it was really, really nice, and I just wanted to say thank you to everybody, your departments. It was a really good group effort, and it went without any hiccups.
I agree. The biggest hiccup we had this weekend was the block party.
Right.
Not the downtown events, which had a lot more people out there.
20,000 people.
Any additional? Alderman Gregory, unfinished business?
Yes, I just, I'll save mine for next week when we talk about our TIFs, but I will say, I'd like to end it on a positive note. I congratulate Southeast Boys Track for their second place at State. They did a fabulous job. Washington Middle School, and I think it's just important to recognize these schools, considering the climate that we have right now. But Washington Middle School went, and they placed in two separate events, and all the other track teams and people, young people that's finishing out. And finally, you know, we haven't talked about this much, but as a Lanfor alumni, I congratulate Mr. Igadala, not only on his Boys and Girls Club Hall of Fame introduction, but a stellar 20-year career. You know, some of the awards and accolades that he has, it's things that only Michael Jordan have, and he's done the city well, and we're proud of him. So I just wanted to congratulate him on that as well. Thank you.
And you were in high school with him.
Absolutely, I in fact stayed, you know. I am old, I can't be called young no more, Ms. Conley. But, you know, it's special to me to see him, you know, there, and me sit in his seat, right? Because through my journey in life, I've stayed with his grandmother, rest her soul, and, you know, I appreciate that family for all they've done for me. So, thank you.
Sir, is there any new business to bring before the City Council? All right, we had one citizen sign up to speak, and that was Alice Ramey, but she has now left. So, oh, sorry, the clerk says there's someone else that I didn't know about, my apologies. It looks like signed up to speak, we have Sharina Douglas, but she was here earlier, and I saw her leave. Yeah, she left as well. So we have a motion to adjourn, second. Okay, all those in favor, aye. Opposed, no. All right, we're adjourned. There we go.